It is one oh five P M. Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay, one oh five P M. January thirtieth, Thursday. We're going to begin the afternoon work session Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Welcome everyone. Good to see you.
Thank you Commissioners. Um, Chris and Bullock, you're gonna leave at two thirty, two forty five?
Two forty five.
Okay, alright. We will. If so, we were, we are going to talk about the feasibility study for recreation center, um, Lake County Intermediate School, uh, Ski Cooper, and then the animal shelter in that order. Does the board want a different order?
Well, could we pack, could we um, punt some of these things to next week so that we can make sure Matt gets?
Thank you also, that'd be great. I think the animal shelters probably the pressing issue and then uh, and I can watch all this on YouTube, so.
Well, how about we start with the animal shelter?
Great.
Um, and go from there.
Great.
Okay, um.
I'm just, I have to say this, Matt, I would love to also leave a little early today just because tonight is Dance Dance Revolution and I'm helping with that and it's at,
Okay, get ready.
It's at six, so it's not, it's a tight turnaround.
Yes, okay. Okay.
Um, yeah, I just have a lot of stuff to set up.
Yes. Um, alright, so, quick background on the animal shelter. Shoot, I can't remember when you were assigned.
March fifteenth, two thousand four.
March fifteenth, two thousand four. There was an I G A created with the county of Lake and the city of Leadville. Um, there are key points there up on the screen, but um, basically, we will each contribute one half of the total cost of construction of the animal shelter on county land. So the animal shelter up by the public works yard is the county's building um, on our, on our county property. Um, city is entitled to joint use and occupancy um, for use of an animal shelter. The city shall maintain and operate the site, but the cost of operation, maintenance administration shall be borne equally between the city and county. That's an important one to remember, to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, um, so, you know, any work on the, on the building, county, you know, facility? City needs to check in with us. Two D, another important one. The Leadville Police Department shall administer the animal shelter and provide a designated officer as the part-time, for more than twelve hours a week administrator to coordinate the activities of the shelter. Time spent administering the animal shelter by said officer shall be billed to the animal shelter budget, which will be paid equally by the city and county. Two, uh, two D for two. Additional, additional staffing volunteer paid for the animal shelter shall either be funded exclusively by the county or as an operational expense in accordance with to be above.
I just started to sign my, a check that has a name very familiar to me on it.
You cross it out and then initial it. That's how you make a.
Yeah, it says check is.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Just cross that out and initial it.
And then uh, Matt can send that one.
Got the checks for me in there?
Yeah, I just signed yours.
Hi.
Okay, carry on.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to do these things at once.
Yeah, you're good. So, fast forward from two thousand four to two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the county joined a budget work session with the city of Leadville to um, discuss the animal shelter budget since we are a joint funder of this uh, community service. So, we joined that meeting and we were told um, our city staff and the mayor at the time that the county has no say in this, period.
I'm sorry, what date was this, twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two, first, first budget year with me here.
Yeah, yeah.
You said, okay.
Rude.
Yeah, see, yes, um, so like, okay, what, what do we do? Alright, well, you know, try again next year. We wanna be collaborative, we wanna work on this, um, try again the next year. Same response. Because I hope, as you have seen, as we've worked through budgets and presentations with the departments, I hold our department directors very accountable to their budgets and to be able to answer budget questions, whether their personnel, operational, you know, supplies and services, professional services, the director should know what is in their budget. And if they can't, at least within half an hour, they should be able to provide me or you the answer. So, twenty twenty-three, and I debated with the, um, I recommended to the commissioners, then Chris and I debated on, I was like, well, maybe we terminate the, the animal shelter I G A, since there's a termination clause in it. You know what? Tried, we'll be collaborative, uh, work again. So we try again in twenty twenty-three. The uh, budget for the animal, animal shelter drastically increased, and we were told that we had no say in it. Twenty twenty-four comes around. I was like, oh, I guess my recommendation this time is that we need to terminate this I G A. Um, you know, if you, if you've read it in your packet, it's a poorly written I G A, it's not very good. So, we sent a termination letter, um, which was sent, um, uh, the I G A dictated that it needed to be sent by.
April first.
April first, um, of uh, of that year to be able to terminate it for the next year. So we sent that letter in March, um, certified mail, email, I think Jeff probably walked a copy down there as well.
And this was three months or less into Dana's first year as mayor?
Correct.
Yeah, just wanna be clear that it's not like it was the same people over there making decisions.
He was, yeah.
Correct, correct, yes.
It was like, one of the first things she dealt with.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, but hopefully it was not a new uh, conversation to her based on her period as the council person.
Right.
Um, so, we sent that um, letter, and within five minutes, uh, city staff responded with a court request asking for the county attorney's uh, amount of time that the county attorney spent on the termination letter. Um.
Hmm, which totally inappropriate because any time that I spend giving y'all advice and counsel with protective attorney client for this, so it was an inappropriate request to begin with, but also I don't track my time for the different tasks I do for the county, so there's new records to provide even if we said, okay, fine, here they are.
She's, she's not a billable attorney anymore.
Yeah.
And that request is from the city council?
City administrator, yeah, city administrator.
City administrator.
Who is also a lawyer?
Yes, who also had, was the one who had been engaged with prior to Dana's term with Tim on this issue.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Could it be phrased that a coro request stated in a situation such as that would be understood as being like fr- frivolous, I guess is the?
That would be my position, because as pointed out, the city administrator is a licensed attorney and should know the parameters of that law, but it was clearly the first, I think, several of targeting me in this matter.
Okay.
And ultimately frivolous coro requests are a um, drain on taxpayer dollars of the entire community.
So, sent the termination letter, and from there, wasn't a whole lot of discussion on it. Um, Commissioner Fiedler, former Commissioner Fiedler was chair at the time. I know he'd reached out to the mayor, uh, and the city administrator several times, mainly outlining the county's concerns. And having an I G A for an animal shelter, okay, but since we are a funding partner, we would like a say, an understanding of the budget. That is the impetus for all of this. I wanna make it very clear and on the record, this is a recommendation coming from me because I don't like when other people budget the county's money. That's my job. Um, um, so, in twenty twenty-one, I started at the end of twenty twenty-one, but the animal shelter budget was a little over a hundred and seventy-seven K. Uh, it is now at basically three hundred and eighty-five K. And I, if you commissioners ask me how and why that happened, I could not answer that.
Because we've had no reporting.
We've had no reporting. I have asked, I have asked all of the same questions that I think Adam and Duncan can attest that I ask about their budgets when we go through the budget proposal to Mayor Green, to the city administrator, and to the animal shelter manager, and I still cannot get an answer.
Mm-hmm.
I do not understand the personnel costs, um, I do not understand where the supplies and services go. I do not understand the operational costs of the animal shelter. I have asked repeatedly for these things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so also during that time, right, it kind of became aware, both connect to the community, but also to the county of like, this is me trying to piece things together with the budget. It's like, oh, okay, so their scope of services, if you're spending more, you gotta be doing something, right? So their scope of services must have increased. So scratching into that a little bit, um, is realizing that the animal shelter would be bringing, was bringing animals in from other communities to our community. But we can debate that all day long, but I think for our community where uh, resources are scarce, we have to focus on our animals, um, and focusing on the services that we provide to our community. Um, so really, so that's what I've been able to piece together for you all, and these, these, you know, the slide deck kind of illustrates that of where we've been and where we're at. I just wanna make very clear and on the record, the previous board, Sheriff Beckman, county attorney, and myself have never advocated for a pound or a kill shelter, ever. We have simply wanted to understand what services and at what cost were being provided to this community, especially since we paid for half of it. So there is, um, you know, there are a lot of things. There are state laws, we also have local ordinances on the books about the animal shelter, what we do with the impoundment of an animal, um, you know, there's Lake County ordinance, and there's the city's municipal code that govern how the animal shelter really um, should be operated.
Mm-hmm.
In my view, is being operated outside of that code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, municipal code is not my jam, it is not um, you know, my thing, but it is something that I think the city should follow. Lake County ordinance is my jam and something that also informs my work. Um, we'll go to the last slide and then we'll, I think, have a general discussion that, for that.
Tim?
Yes.
Before we do.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I appreciate this. This is how I have understood it as well. What, and uh, what would you say has been the city's, like, if the city were giving this presentation, what are some of the things they would add to how this has gone?
That's an excellent question. Um, I think the city uh, would add or maintain that the county has no say in this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think they would probably talk about like resource or capacity constraints, or perhaps that the county, meaning me last year, or in the prior board, weren't, you know, actively listening, which I would, I would disagree with that one. Um, because also it's important to remember, so about August, September last year, is when work on a new draft of the animal shelter came about, and that's where there's a realization, you know, the, the county saying, you, we, we hit the red button, right? We, we, that was the lever, that was the tool we had after, after previous uh, failed efforts. So I think from then, um, the mayor and uh, county, uh, and the city administrator, they also acknowledged like this I G A is out of date, it's created in a different time, we need to update this and do all of this. That's when then, um, we, the county was invited to a joint work session with city council, and I think that was in August. Um, so I have a discussion about animal shelter services and the budget. Um, Sheriff Beckman also joined us for that meeting, uh, as did about forty other people in the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was not a productive work session. The county didn't think could like discuss anything with that, and then there were subsequent meetings where, you know, you know, sometimes when I go to city council or hospital district or school board meetings, right? Like, I'm there representing the board, and I either remind that board of the county's position or something that we're working on if the commissioner can't attend. And, you know, it was during one of those city council meetings, the budget, where I reminded the, reminded city council of the county's notice um, of termination or intent to terminate the I G A.
Mm-hmm.
And that was met with skepticism by some members of city council, and I was like, I sent the letter in March, and we've been talking about it. Um, I think both sides, commissioner also would uh, admit the process has not been perfect. Communication has been tense at some times, um, in that, I don't know, maybe a one month the county prioritized it, and the next month the city did, but it was never prioritized at the same time. Perhaps could be something that could be added to that.
Hmm.
Um, so anyway, I think then, um, post-election, uh, you know, as, as you guys came on board and more engaged, I think you saw what the previous board did, was like, okay, we will set aside, based on twenty twenty-four actuals, we will set aside the hundred and sixty K to be used for animal shelter services for twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
The previous board also extended the notice to terminate through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. So instead of terminating January one, it will now terminate March thirty-first.
And is that allowed under the I G A? I thought it had to be.
Both, both parties agreed to it.
Yeah, they made, it, it was a joint amendment, it sounded like it was to give the extension.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. And so we've had, we've had a lot of conversations, um, you know, perhaps the county under the sheriff's office takes over um, the animal shelter and its operations. Because a lot of um, calls uh, for, well, there are a lot of city-related calls for animals, you know, dog on the loose, or for, you know, more another litter of kittens born somewhere. Um, but then, uh, also, you know, in the unincorporated parts of the county, um, you know, there are also animal calls, which can be livestock, wildlife, you know, some of those kind of things where either like a sheriff's deputy or an animal control officer can either assist, Colorado Parks Wildlife Forest Service, that kind of stuff. Um, so also in twenty twenty-four, the board did give approval and opened up a, a position for Sheriff Beckman to uh, post and hire for an animal control officer, which the sheriff has since done.
Is it full-time?
It is a full-time position. And I, I mean, when the sheriff comes to talk to you, I know he can talk more about that rationale, so part of the conversation was like, well, maybe then, yes, the county does take it over. Um, or, you know, uh, several of these other, other options, right? So there's, there's options um, allowed, like, you know, we could sell the land and the property to the city, they could buy the animal shelter. Um, we could amend the I G A to do similar for what we do for uh, humans who are arrested. We pay sixty-five dollars a day to Chaffey County Sheriff's Office to house folks there. Perhaps we come up with a fair rate to house a dog and a cat at the animal shelter if they're, if they're a county animal. Um, you know, and then another big thing, part of this uh, that has been hard is like really like asking for the data.
Mm-hmm.
How many animals did you take in, in a year, in a quarter, in a month? How much did you spend on those animals?
Where were they from?
Also, where were they from?
How long did you hold them?
How long did you hold them?
We don't get any of that.
We do not, and the last update.
At the end of the, sorry.
At the end of the year, it finally came.
There was something.
There was something, but those numbers didn't even match the previous numbers when I had asked the question, give me your three-year average, what, what have you done for the past three years? Or did, give me twenty twenty-three's numbers. I don't have that information. And that is a direct line from the animal shelter manager. I was like, hold on. I think you should know that number. Um.
They, they're new as well though, right?
Yeah.
You know?
No.
And um, yeah, so, you know, I think some of those basic data things, and then there was some information at the end of the year, and then at the last city council meeting, maybe not the last one, the one before.
When was the last one?
Was the last one with the animal shelter manager's update. The numbers didn't match. What was, what, what was reported that they had, and then what was reported to the, what's that association?
I think C A S A.
Those numbers didn't match, so it was like, well, why are you reporting this to PACFA and you're reporting this to council?
Mm-hmm.
Typo-tating, you guys know that, um, numbers can change. I know you guys know that as well, but I just, it's, it's been very hard to have to be a funding partner for this and not see an explanation for the money.
Yeah.
Um.
I just not have the average. I did this one.
What did I?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
This one?
That, that, what did they do this for?
Or the cost per?
Yeah, I thought was it?
That was it, I was like.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Um, I, yes, so, you know, fourteen hundred dollars per animal
and that's the.
For two hundred and sixty-five, yeah.
That came through the door. Now, out of the numbers that were reported, a hundred and nine of those were returned to owners, which typically is not a long-term stay in the shelter. They, they come up that morning and they're back at home, that, so. So even if you were to take, if you take out the hundred and nine, the, the amount for the ones that were actually retained in shelter is much higher.
Hmm.
Are they paying for major medical procedures to animals who are severely injured?
You know, we have asked about that. Um, we did receive some explanation of taking animals to an animal hospital in Westminster.
Yeah.
But it, it seemed like every animal is going to that, and, and that's the thing too, right? Again, back to being a pound or being a kill shelter, we of course want the animals taken care of, right? If it's an animal that is hit by a car and is taken to the animal shelter, of course, we want that taken care of.
Okay, so I, I, I feel like instead of, you know, we're, we're, we're spinning our wheels with the city of Leadville and kind of buddy heads, and I don't wanna just continue that. So like, what would be a new fresh approach? Like, can we take like a scaled-down version of the what works, like the agreement with the fire department?
That's, that's why the Mayor Green submitted a, a draft I G A for consideration that I believe she, she patterned off of the one for the fire district.
Does that include reporting and numbers that we get?
Yes, limited, yes. Yeah, and you have, you have a copy of that, that was in.
Yeah.
Okay. That was in the package, okay.
And uh, I, I would suggest to the board that that structure is not going to be a beneficial structure.
Mm-hmm.
Here for the, for this operation. Now, I am, I am more than committed, and I would like to put that feather in my hat before I leave to get this done and taken care of. But it has taken me three years to get to this point.
This is your unfinished business?
This is my unfinished business.
Like you'll be a ghost if you don't get this done?
Yes, yes, yes. I'll start joining public.
Wow.
Yeah.
I'm sure you will.
Yeah.
Slow down.
Right.
You might drive over here.
Yeah, but uh.
You're on Zoom again.
Yeah.
Gotta finish this.
Yeah, but, and I will also say with the fire I G A, it has taken me three years to renegotiate that with the city of Leadville, and it is still not done either.
Too many whys, um.
I currently have concerns about how the city is managing that department.
I have concerns about taxpayer dollars being used.
Yeah, and I.
Inefficient.
Exactly, even if we had an I G A that's similar to the fire department, that doesn't solve. It does not solve the managing of that department. Like, yes, we'd have a say.
Yeah.
Absolutely, but like. We would not manage that department.
Other than current structure, yes, right, and and some of the alternatives too is 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 somewhat related in here is that.
Which is. Current structure. Yeah.
You know, there is the option to flip the sort to where the county operates the animal shelter instead.
Yeah.
Or to use the I G A renegotiation process to build in more more parameters for the reporting and input and that type of thing.
Um.
What can we buy for that kind of money? Well, we could have like, hey, it's a county animal, we'll take care of it. City, you gotta talk to those guys and just kind of.
Well. Those.
Of course.
Well, and there's, yeah, so.
Those services are just so redundant then, like that's definitely a loss of taxpayer dollars.
Right. Yeah.
And we've talked, I mean, every time we've talked about, the community has talked about merging departments.
Merging departments where it makes sense.
It's a lot, yeah, so if we have a merged apartment, it's great, but it currently it's not going well, right? I also, I um. If 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 this has been brought up by the county since twenty twenty-two. What I worry about is that the city has too much going on to be able to like prioritize this, to hear from a partner or a funding partner like, hey. We need this done, this is a priority to us. I respect that like the city is trying to do a lot with with, they're trying to do a lot. So if they don't actually have time to prioritize what we're asking for, like that to me is a concern that like maybe this is just too much for the city. If they don't, it's just a concern, I'm not I'm not saying there's an action behind that, I'm not suggesting anything, it's just something I've been curious about. Like, why was this not kind of lifted up the priority list? Were there just too many fires in the city and is that ever gonna end? Like, what's the future of the city being able to manage this?
Couldn't us, I I'm not saying we do this, I'm just putting these out there as what-ifs. You know, like if we took over primary operations, would there be a scenario where that saves the city money and helps them out? Since they have less obligations with the animal shelter and we kind of fold that under our operations and then we can, you know, have a little more input or, you know. Reporting or accountability and the city can have to contribute less. Or, you know, whenever we can figure out to save or trim or um.
If we run it for less, yes, right?
Yeah.
And and I think that even like the administrative burden of running a department, like that takes staff time to run a department. So if the staff is not, like, we don't have that burden currently, we're not running it.
Right.
So if we took it on, we would add that administrative burden, it would be taken off of the city. But it doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna like run it more efficiently. And I'm also gonna say that like, yes, we have a great sheriff right now, but he he Sheriff Speckman is the exception, not the rule. So just because it's going well right now, I also want to respect that like, I wouldn't necessarily trust that change under previous sheriffs.
And that that is a good point because I think there there are two ways um you can view this or three-way, or. You can view this purely through the law enforcement lens as the animal control is a law enforcement function.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
And then, correct my language, and then as a shelter, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you have a post-certified and trained deputy in animal control, they go, you know, they deal with the. They make the red, whatever, they they do that, but they swing by, drop it off, they're done, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um. So there's there's, because you can think about it in those ways as well, it can be disparate of like solely law enforcement function and then as an animal shelter.
So it could potentially just be its own department, it wouldn't necessarily be housed under the sheriff.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds a lot better.
The officer would be under the sheriff.
Yeah.
But functions could be under.
The shelter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah.
Like it is at the city.
I mean, one distinction, well, and that's part of the issue with the I G A, it wasn't intended to be just a separate department outside of the police department there. That's why the provision was written in, the police department had oversight over it because of the the animal control law enforcement function of it. But the the other side to it too is there's a difference between an animal shelter under the code and let's say a humane society facility.
Yeah.
Which is, I think, and that's that's part of this migration expense has been a migration more into from from traditional government shelter operations into more of a humane society. You know, what what a nonprofit humane society would provide to its community kind of thing. We have great, you know, relationships with Arc Valley Humane Society down in B D, they serve like counties as well as the other communities and stuff too. So probably the question is, do we need another humane society? Do we need what has by code been set up for this community in terms of the animal shelter? And again, the the narrative of an animal shelter is just for impoundment and euthanasia of animals is very far from from accurate. In fact, Colorado law doesn't permit for kill shelters anymore. There there's legislation that was passed that you are expected to, you know, find homes and stuff for the animals you take into your animal shelter unless there's certain exceptions. And that would be like an animal got hit by a car and was so grievously injured, it would not be repaid or, if you will. And that allows for euthanasia.
Mm-hmm.
But otherwise, there's there's no allowance for kill shelters in Colorado.
Even dangerous fishes?
That is, that's part of the law enforcement analysis and judicial analysis of that animal. You know, vicious animals and such, they have to go through the judicial process for the judge to determine if that animal should be detained or euthanized.
I had to save a dog in animal court that wasn't mine, it was someone else's, but I had to take possession of that dog and get him out of Denver. Bring him on up here and there was there.
Any chance that we could get the mayor and the manager in here and just have a frank discussion? And and also if we pursue taking it from them, it's like a. You know, damage the relationship they're under pair. Is there a position that they want to keep it at all costs?
Yes.
So that, I don't know, that's something to consider.
Okay, well then, if they wanted to keep it at all costs and that's their line in the sand, then, you know, we can see what we can figure out to work. Uh as long as they can report to us and show us that these dollars are being used properly and we're avoiding wasting taxpayer dollars anywhere we can. I don't think that's too big of an ask.
Matt, I love your idea of getting them in here, definitely the sooner we can have a conversation with them. I also wish this was not our first conversation with them. You know, I just, I'm worried that they have so much baggage around this and we don't, right? We're new, so we have the opportunity to come to this.
It'd be good to know their position and not, I mean, we're kind of speculating here.
Yeah.
Or at least we are speculating.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to hear them calmly tell us exactly what they want, what they don't want.
Yeah.
And we could form our opinion based on that. I mean, it sounds like we don't want a spanner clinic, foster clinic. Or it sounds like it's not in the code?
That's the only thing that the county code, the municipal code and Lake County ordinance provides for is impoundment of animals. It's not, it doesn't provide for services to the general community, if you will, beyond the fact that we take care of stray, lost, abandoned, abused animals.
So if they want to go down that road, we're gonna have to amend the code because it's in the county.
It on both sides, we would have to because it's not near municipal code either.
Yeah.
So they're not compliant with the code. If they. If they're indeed doing that and and doing that without supervision or.
Well, I I can paint maybe some broader context of things, you know, that happened in twenty twenty-four as well, I think touching on on things that each of you said. So also related to bullet point one, right? City hasn't really been in compliance with the obligations under the I G A.
Yeah.
They've debated that, so okay, fine, neither here nor there, we focus on the budget piece, okay, great. Um, we're also focusing on what is it that this community receives? So throughout all of twenty twenty-four, um, you know, you guys uh can follow up with Sheriff Speckman after this, but think as you're aware. City didn't have a police chief for a very long time. Um, there was an interim police chief. There also have been, you know, very understaffed or the staff to not have focused on that. So during twenty twenty-four as well as when we tried very, very hard to get the law enforcement I G A in place very quickly. The basic tenants of that law enforcement I G A, since Sheriff Speckman and his team respond to calls within the city of Leadville. Um, was to, you know, at least have some kind of compensation because the sheriff's team is burnt out, he is also short-staffed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you know, if you have an issue down in Twin Lakes, if he only has one deputy on in the evenings. If there's an issue down in Twin Lakes, something bad happens up here.
Yeah.
That is a lack of our duty to the service to this community. Um, so that was also kind of a context, just to add a context into this of like really trying to be able to serve the public. Um, just having a really, really hard time doing that. Um, so I do think, I think with three new commissioners, right? Having uh the administrator and the mayor come and have that discussion is a great idea.
I like that idea, I don't think we should do it in here.
And that, yeah, it's totally.
And not at city hall.
Because it it's imbalanced for the city's side of things.
Were they invited to do a presentation on like, who is the city, what, just like everybody else?
Yes, yes, and Lori was supposed to go first, yeah.
Oh, and Lori, she was like, okay, yeah, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah. She had, yeah, she had that.
And there was a joint work session, as I mentioned earlier, back in September.
Right. Right.
And it essentially was the city presenting its its.
Stance.
Position.
Yeah.
And and there was no input, it it wasn't a joint work session, it wasn't like going to take, it was just, they pretty much told the county what their structure was and what they.
No one else got the talking stick, okay. Well, did members of the public did?
Well, yeah, they did allow members of the public um to express their opinions as to how the animal shelter should be operated.
Was it strategically set up that way?
Possibly. Yes, may as sure as.
Or maybe with one, maybe be able to get that impression from an outside point of view.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I'm down to have a conversation somewhere else.
And we did. Yeah.
I think that's 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 gender, I think that's.
We. Yeah, and we did have a conversation with um the animal shelter manager, the city administrator and the mayor, along with myself, Sheriff Speckman. Um, Finn, council member, uh Edwards came as well, the under sheriff and Chris. And that was a. Unproductive meeting.
Nice.
Um. However, I do think it is a good idea to find a neutral place, find a room up at C M C.
Mm-hmm.
Um, have that discussion.
What do you mean unproductive?
Hostile?
Yes.
Yes, there, and and in fact, it's they, it was originally just to be the mayor, city administrator and shelter manager and council member showed up without them knowing and they did not offer him the certificate.
Hmm, so he sat on the floor.
He sat on the floor.
That was awkward. No, Joey.
Yes.
Um, the other meeting didn't go well. I'm happy to, I'm I'm happy to join those meetings with you all and sit behind you and not say a thing.
Nope. Nope.
I'm fine not to come, it's fine, that is totally fine, but I just want you to know the context of why this has been an issue for me for the past three years.
Yeah.
Um, and is it a broader community conversation on the shelter and its operations? Yes, it is because it's directly tied to those dollars.
Right.
Um.
I don't think anyone. I can't imagine anyone reasonably faulting us for wanting some accountability of where the dollars are going. I'm curious of where the conversation is being sidelined, you know, uh where the tangents are going after that, that's derailing the whole thing. So I think for now, that that's great in a nutshell, this is gonna take a lot more than what, you know, we can cover right now. Thanks for.
Yeah.
Going over that much with us and um.
And uh, we, I, um, yes, just let me know if you need help with uh setting that meeting.
What do you, what do you all think? I kind of want, I would love to make sure that Tim doesn't become a ghost. But I also like disrespect that maybe there's too much, I want to start with a fresh plate.
Yeah.
And just like Andy is suggesting of doing it somewhere else, also maybe having different people in the room would be the most valuable thing we could offer. So we can kind of do this for Tim instead of with him.
I I would just highly recommend that you definitely review all the information behind the scene, including, we'll have to get, there was a presentation event for this September work session that the city ran.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That has a lot of information from their perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and stuff that is, I would say, you should have staff vet that.
Yes.
Absolutely.
For accuracy and.
I definitely want to bring staff, just not, I mean, not either of you.
Or 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 that will be just a discussion session informative, no decision-making.
It's just a work session.
So here's my suggestion, you know, if you're not gonna take your staff that's been involved with us for the last three years or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah.
To suggest that they don't have their staff come either.
Hmm.
Because I think it's very, very good.
You say mayor, city council and and the commissioners.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
You know, like, we'll just, we'll pare it down to just us, they will probably see value in that.
And he too, I would suggest perhaps he being involved because of the animal control aspect.
What's the benefit of not having the city manager and the team and Chris in the room?
I'm concerned, especially with what's going on on online.
Emotional component.
What's going on online?
Well, Chris has been super targeted about this because she.
Volunteers with plant pet hood.
She volunteers for plant pet hood. So I think that like, I not for any fault of Chris's, but I but unfortunately, Chris has been pulled into this as um like a malicious player in the conversation. I don't, so that, and then Tim also seems to have been pulled in as a malicious player with people thinking that he wants to turn it into a kill shelter and a pound. So I'm just saying like, can we just, can we just remove those players? So even just like from a public perception, people aren't like, well, Chris is gonna be pushing this in the meeting or Tim is gonna be pushing this. We can just talk elected to elected and be like, they weren't even there, we're talking as.
Well, maybe. It would be post, sorry, it would be posted as a double meeting.
Yeah, please.
Mm-hmm.
If we have it in a restaurant, people are gonna come, we can't stop them from coming.
Are we obligated to take public comments?
Absolutely not.
No.
Okay.
Well, we don't, yeah, we can do it wherever we want and we and it's just like these work sessions, we can say, yeah, you're welcome to, we'll read your chat and we'll answer you or no.
Hmm.
We have to.
Or, yeah, can it just be uh attended, public attendance by Zoom only so that we can really conversate with the a lot of their elected officials? Or does there need to be in-person?
There you, you need to allow for the in-person.
The accessibility.
Just for friends, yeah.
Because they do.
Okay, yeah.
They don't have that that functionality, but you could have it somewhere to where they can attend and listen, but not necessarily participate in the in the process.
Got it, okay.
So it is a conversation between you and your other elected colleagues down the street.
Okay. And I will.
How hard would that be to set up? But I think there's so many people involved and so much uh emotions involved, with people who show up and demand to be. I don't, I don't know, man, it sounds like tough move.
And I do, I might be challenged too to not have city staff there, but I think that's that is the request to the mayor and council, I think that they'll probably honor it.
Oh, yeah, I want, I. Yeah.
I think we can make that argument, right?
We'll be with you, the selected officials, the elected officials, we will discuss options, you know, share information and then head back and then come back to the table again later today.
Yeah. And I will, I will say as well, because the um, one of the issues I think that arose from twenty twenty-four. And I will, I will say as well, because the um, one of the issues I think that arose from twenty twenty four as well, right, was Commissioner Fiedler was. The board's rep to work with Dana on this.
Mm-hmm.
Right, Dana has a day job.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff had kid, Jeff Jeff was busy as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it was very hard for them to connect and then sometimes that feedback loop wasn't fully there or for the full board to digest it. Or for it to happen in this big public forum so that everybody could hear it. Um, so I would just, if that if that is brought up as well, I think in the future, it makes sense, send one of you as a delegate, be like, hey, we're gonna meet on this. I think for now, it needs to be the full board, and if all the city council doesn't wanna go, that's on them.
Yeah. Very well.
Cool, I think it's. I'd be curious to see if the whole city council's on the same page or if they're split or if like, how does that decision making? Go, and then obviously they direct the the manager, right?
Mm-hmm.
She doesn't run the place, does she?
She does.
She doesn't.
Yeah, just like Tim runs.
But I mean, just uh in the scope of things, like she's not a decision maker, she she serves up the, you know. She serves their their priorities.
The trick is that sometimes she can like not, any, they might, that position might not prioritize things, so then the council has to like make a. What is the actual thing that you do? Direct, they have to vote.
To do something, yeah.
To direct their manager to do something if then if the manager isn't getting to it.
Yeah.
Because we manage this, these two positions, but only the mayor manages this city administrator.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
And and part of the issue with this with this matter has been the failure to share out information with members of city council.
Yeah.
Learned this past fall that the termination letter that was sent the end of March was never given to city council.
Hmm.
They did not get a copy of that until.
That's all.
Wow, so if we're gonna go into this meeting, we need to really arm ourselves with all the information and also try not to. Form too much of an opinion.
Yeah.
And not just adopt Jeff Fiedler's opinion.
Well, or the city's either.
Or the city's, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why you have work sessions, cause that. Allows you to collect information without making decisions on that information without further review or vetting it to ensure that you've got accurate information.
Are we, you know, running low on time? I mean, how long is this gonna take to end all that?
Yeah, that's that's part of the concern is, part of the issue we had with trying to renegotiate the I G A last year was there's a lot of.
Same.
Foot dragging, so we got down to the law on that, it didn't happen, that's why we had to amend the existing one to extend it, it's extended to the end of March.
Okay.
And that's it.
So we should try to have this first, this work session in February, like earlier.
Yeah. Yeah.
February so that we can each direct our staff.
Can I reach out to the mayor and ask about setting this thing up?
So just us and city council?
Yes. Yeah.
And then uh, we'll have to, somebody will have to help me find that. That file.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, I was just about to, yeah.
And then maybe before we go there, we could have one more work session in here with you guys and.
Yeah.
Ask their questions.
Should we establish a goal for the meeting or just or just listen to them or?
We have, is it the thirteen?
I think taking it over.
Another work session?
As far as I understand it, it's from Dana, it would be really difficult, there's shared assets, there's.
And that's part of the, I hate to use the term fact checking that needs to be done, because I I.
Mm-hmm.
I believe that the city might have an inaccurate um view of the ownership of the assets of the animal shelter because. The county has paid for half of everything that's there, so you know.
But they paid for half of the construction.
Back in the day.
Back in the day, and there's, there are government accounting standards that essentially they want, you know, one of the things they say is that.
Yes.
The county takes the neighbor that they wanna be paid back what they put into it, but the accounting standards don't allow that, that essentially has been fully amortized.
Mm-hmm.
Throughout the the lifespan of that building so far, so they don't have the ability to say, well, we want every dollar we put into it because.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, there's no way.
The depreciation of that doesn't exist anymore, so.
Yeah.
And fun fact, in twenty twenty two, as I was working through our insurance renewals. I was like, oh, the animal shelter, why is that on there? Cause the city also insured it.
Animal insurance, yeah.
Yeah.
Boy, that's safe.
There is a, we do have a work session scheduled with y'all on February thirteenth at ten o'clock for the animal shelter, I think I dropped that back the other day.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
So that's for 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 y'all's work session with us or whatever, so that's already scheduled, I don't know.
Yeah.
Could do it right after that?
So we can be separate.
Or we should do it, if we could do it before that and then get their.
Like, do it before that?
Yeah.
Their side of things and then come back here and see if we can hammer out some some logistical nuts and bolts kind of ideas and.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, we're looking for a meeting with Dana or Dana and all the city council?
In the council.
Yeah, whoever is passionate and wants to be involved.
As many people who can attend.
Yeah.
My intention for that would to be like, start a relationship afresh, cause ultimately what this I G A is a relate, is is a relationship between the city and the county. To provide services and I want us to have a great relationship with the city, so we can just make, we can just know that it's been done. And we're gonna get reports, so my, yeah, my intention would be that we can like start a new relationship with the city.
Yeah.
It'd be great if you didn't have to take it over, if they would just do their their part.
Yeah.
I don't know, that'd be my ultimate goal, would be like, alright, you guys just do.
Do better.
What you're supposed to do, keep track of all the numbers and also get in compliance with code.
Yeah. But we do need a new I G A.
Just get back to operations.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
We do need a new I G A because the the I G A will expire March thirty first.
Yes.
And with that, our money stops.
And when that happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then we need to give the option to the city to purchase the animal shelter?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
If if the I G A terminates and the county decides it will operate its own animal shelter, then the city doesn't have any right to purchase that property.
Mm-hmm.
Because we continue to use it as an animal shelter.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, that they would have to establish their own facility and.
But we lose a major service for the public and we don't, that's a.
No, well, cause we would do it.
That we wouldn't avoid that at all, probably.
No, I was gonna say, it would be lost, yeah, it it wouldn't be lost, and nobody wants to see animal shelter services next on a county that is an essential service.
Well, and they have, just because our money ends doesn't mean they don't still have funding to float it till like September. And then if we decided to go back into an I G A, we'd probably have to like upfront the final quarter. Cause they would have floated it for a quarter, you know. Or whatever, you know, the math, however the math works. So it's not like services would end just because the I G A is terminated.
Yeah, ultimately, we wanna do what's best for the community.
Yeah.
Right.
And the taxpayers, cause they're paying the bill.
Yeah, that's the other component I like, which we need to be thoughtful and responsible for.
Right. Yes.
And and the dogs and cats, yeah.
That's right. Um, okay, so, um.
So Andy's on it.
Andy's on it.
Thank you, Andy.
Yes, and commissioner, if you need help with the space, I think maybe Adam's space across the street, uh, the visitor center could be used, C M C.
Thank you, Charlie.
Um, just let us know, so we can help that way.
Yes.
Yeah, I would suggest one thirteen East Fifth Street.
But what about Zoom options, could it be work, yeah, good, okay, sweet. Yeah, that'd be neighborly.
One of the, he needs to.
It's the visitor center, so it's.
So what was their maximum occupancy, like thirty people or so?
No, I mean, the um, I was assuming that if public comment's gonna be on Zoom, you know, that space we have set up for twelve.
Okay.
Um, and then, but yeah, the visitor center space, if you needed it, maximum capacity could be like fifty, but it wouldn't be comfortable.
Yeah, same.
But in terms of the, um, it, my offices, um, I was thinking where that, where everyone would be online, and then it'd be.
Yeah, it there's just, since we have to allow public, um, in person.
Yep.
You have to allow for public access.
Mm-hmm.
Chris, what's our legal requirement for for providing space?
Yeah.
It it's a public meeting, you have to to allow public access to the meeting, not participation, just access, they have to have access to either online.
Just period.
That could be first come, first served in space lines.
Or, and or you could also Zoom it and have people who want to listen in come here and listen, you know, it doesn't have to be.
Oh, that's clever.
You have to be able to provide them with access.
Oh, yeah, there's a workaround.
And and to be honest, my office is bigger than the space.
Yeah.
We also have our classroom, I think, that can be used in a fit available forty-ish people.
Just don't have any shirts. Nice, thanks, Brian.
Sweet, thank you.
Well, not to derail this, you guys would uh, I'd like to go exactly backwards on this agenda in in priority, if that's, I know you guys are. Here to talk about the rec center?
Ski Cooper.
Oh, Ski Cooper.
Oh, perfect.
You guys could also do it on the front lawn on a chilly evening, real fast.
Yes. Brilliant.
To do what?
Our.
I could talk to.
Then we're legally bound to have burned barrels and, and those people, like, people would never have.
Right, yes, yes. Um, so the board, you guys wanna talk about Ski Cooper next?
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Is that's all right with everybody here?
Of course.
Okay. Ski Cooper. I think you have all skied it or taught your kids to ski there.
Shredded the gnar.
Okay. So, um, we have a lease, a long-term lease with Ski Cooper, um, twenty forty seven?
Forty eight, forty eight.
Twenty forty eight, so when it goes through a till, um. At like, I I assume you guys all know like the Tenth Mountain history there, um, a previous iteration of Board of County Commissioners after the mine closed at one point in our history, it was like. Diversify our economy, we have to, we have to, we have this land, so it's open to skier, yeah, fast forward, here we are, um. So over the past couple of years, um, the board and myself, um, and I think all the staff in the room have. Continued to hear various challenges with Ski Cooper, um. And it's a very difficult lease, um, to try and get them to uh. Um, to do that, or to to have those more kind of like open and honest and upfront conversations. Anyway, so I I think maybe all of you attended or or watched uh one of the meeting that we finally had with the Ski Cooper Board and with their chair, Mr. John Clapper.
It actually wasn't recorded.
Yeah.
Yep.
That was the one that was not recorded.
Yes, so.
Is there a recording of it somewhere?
No, um, that's why we never hit the pause button, I just leave it record, just leave it record.
Yeah.
Um, so, anyway, um, a whole host of issues were discussed and a part of, okay, so I had, it clears mud here. Lake County holds the permit with United States Forest Service for Ski Cooper to operate.
Mm-hmm.
Through the lease, Ski Cooper must follow the permit and do a whole, you know, a whole host of things uh for the skier to operate and continue to receive the. The Forest Service permit, so we did discuss um the letter of default that are deficiencies, letter of deficiencies. That the Forest Service sent, um, we did discuss, we'll talk about this slide, and I'll talk about the next slide, a host of issues that we had discussed with um. Ski Cooper Board and their leadership, um, and then their attorney said the two hundred and eighty seven letter response, page responses.
Yeah.
Um.
Water, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
All sorts of attachments.
Yes, yes, it was interesting, um. Anyway, um, so I'm not gonna go through all of these, but I think, um, like hopefully you guys are aware of these, but community access. Childcare programs, ski school, youth ski programs, the weird, the portal entry, uphill ski policy, ski shuttle. Adam um spent an obscene amount of time ramming his head against the wall between me and Dan Torso, the uh Ski Cooper C E O. But in the end, Adam prevailed and Ski Cooper uh did join us in expanding transit services out to Ski Cooper um. On weekends and Ski Cooper is footing the bill for this season, and it has been a huge success, way to go, Adam. It's what success feels like.
Ridership numbers are increasing.
Celebrate, celebrate.
Yes.
So ridership numbers are increasing and they're.
Yeah.
Tracking them as well, cause that was, that was their contingency for continued funding next year.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they, are they happy with it? Is it their employees or?
So hop on board.
It's a mix. It's a both, and it's now it's starting to get, now now folks know about it, um, Adam did really great with. Earned and paid media on that.
Nice, sweet, a marketing interest, yes.
Wow, Tim.
I know, learning, um, but yeah, the the news went national, um, on Ski Cooper having a shuttle. I think a lot of, I don't know, um, was there a shuttle when you were a kid?
No.
Okay.
Not necessarily.
There was a shuttle when Abel was a kid, so, um, so there used to be a shuttle in the past, anyway, so Adam brought the shuttle back, so that is a very exciting partnership and. You know, an ability to show that we can partner with each other. Ah, then there are some, um, and I, I will just point this out, the biggest ones. That we have heard from the community are community access, childcare and youth ski programming. Um, you know, I think we we touched on a little bit the other day, right, skiing is one of those sports that is cost prohibitive. But if you do get a kid into it and hooked to it, then they're more likely to become adult skiers. Um, so the entire industry is moving that way, it's been working to diversify and expand access to youth of all kinds. Uh, socioeconomic statuses to get them hooked into the sport, um, but anyway.
And one, one thing on that too, I think, um, if you all haven't had a chance, if you do get a chance to talk with Ben Carnes. About um his involvement with youth ski programming and his relationship with Ski Cooper, I know that he um. Has reached a breaking point and his, have moved their programming down to Copper.
Yeah.
And that's just, you know, again, ano- another example of a pretty strong pillar of the community that is very involved in. Uh, activating the next generation of ski and snow sports, um, that has reached a breaking point.
And for, oh, we take fourth graders for one day, all fourth graders out to ski. That's just been very difficult to work with Ski Cooper on because they really want. Good publicity around like the tenth mountain division piece that is tied with school curriculum. So they're only willing to work with us if it gets tightened there somewhere, but the school curriculum changes and we can't always control that, so. That opportunity was moved for not doing a ski day for fourth graders over there anymore, and Copper Mountain is actually helping us. Even more as an outside partner to do a ski program and for all fourth graders, we're pivoting uh for our Nordic ski program. Which is unfortunate, cause Ski Cooper is such a small, friendly, local ski hill and for our. Uh, elementary kids to not be able to go, uh, that's a, it's something that can be improved.
Um, then there's a small opportunity of summer operations, right, we have this.
Can I, let's pause real quick, can you just send me a little brief email, like describing some of that so that.
Yeah.
I can ask questions at the next Cooper Board meeting.
Yeah, he's currently serving as our representative.
And so, and I'm hearing, like, I was a coach for lots of mountain sports, like, you know, I'm I'm hearing it, and it's like, how do I. Communicate this without immediately getting walls defensive, you know, responses and then more of like, let's work together to fix this, you want the optics and the good marketing. We want the kids to shred, let's, you know, figure out a win-win here so that we can move forward and kind of put this bit of. Turbulent history behind us because it's not one person, it's not one source, there's a lot of grumbling um going on. So I'd like to be able to take that to the board, but um, I have to really make sure I cross my t's and dot my i's in how I ask it.
Yeah, uh, I can share that through the appropriate avenues, uh, as I've also been talking to just other groups in town that used to frequent uh Ski Cooper with their programming and. Uh, I can share some of that as well.
Cool.
One of the, one of the things they mentioned at our meeting was that. There hasn't really been a, a county representative coming out to the. there hasn't really been a, a county representative coming out to the meetings and participating quite some time, so. I don't know if that's true or not.
That was it, so, as part of the challenge, so in the lease, it says that it has to be a county commissioner. In their bylaws, it says it has to be a county commissioner, well, I think in the lease says county commissioner, their designee. In the board's bylaws, it says it has to be a county commissioner, cuz I asked that when I very first started, I was like, change your bylaws and let me go as a designee of the board, no, we're not gonna do that.
Yeah.
Um, I will say there there was, has been, uh, historically, a lack of engagement of the county designee going and attending those meetings. However, I will also say, whether it was Sarah, or Kayla, or Jeff, um, the meeting invites or the meeting, uh, information would come out the day beforehand. So, and they'd be like, hey, we're gonna meet at the top of the mountain, uh, we're gonna start the chairlift at nine thirty, and you're like, and it's like four thirty the night, the day before, and you're like. And then also, they, you know, we, it was like, it it still hasn't happened, I double-checked with Liz, but I'm just like, hey, could you please at least have Sandra on that email so that when you guys are busy, or if you're down at the Capitol, or whatever you're doing, that there's someone else to be there to help nudge and remind you to go to these things. That battle I have fought for three years of like, if you just put me on the email, I'll make sure a commissioner's there. You know, like.
And, um, at the last, uh, meeting, uh, one of the board members, when I was speaking to the board, one of the board members asked me if I had ever asked to come and present to the board. Um, and I can tell you that, um, uh, the only email addresses that I ever had were Dan Torso's and Dana Johnson. And, um, that when I were, when I met with them in person, as well as interactions I'd had with them, um, online, it was, uh, that, um, the board meetings were in the weeds and that they weren't open to folks like myself. That that, anything that the staff would wanna communicate would need to be communicated through the, a board and county commissioner.
Well, we got Andy here, and I think Andy's established already a good rapport. So hopefully, we don't have to use a hammer, we can just use a light cattle prop.
An hand.
And, uh, Andy's gonna be there all the time anyway, we looked at his schedule.
And just.
Does it just say shredding?
He's just saying this.
Just some additional info on Ski Cooper, uh, in this realm as well, they are a nonprofit.
Yeah.
As well as they're incorporated, uh, and they're, within nonprofits, there are, there is information that is publicly accessible. Of course, there are pieces that are restricted to board business, as there is within the board. But, uh, some of their kind of limitations that they put out just seem a little out there, sort of say, because there is information that should be available to the public to be able to learn about how they operate, their business, et cetera. Excluding industry secrets or whatever they are working on that falls under.
Yeah, business strategies, things like that, you know, they don't want competitors to get ahead of them on stuff.
Yeah. And I'll give you just like one last like choice, but like anecdotal thing, and uh, under child programs and care. So every year, in their lease, they have to host Ski Cooper Days, which is usually kind of in the fall, it's an open house. They have to buy everyone a beer, they have food, they give their, their annual or.
Community meeting.
Yeah, it is, yes.
Yes.
So I went my first year and I was like, weird, so, no, this was my second year, sorry, but I was there and they raised my hand and I was like, so, you complained a lot about COVID and the governor shutting down the, uh, the ski resorts? And, um, then you gave the justification for closing ski school and turning that into a bar. Um, you know, that cuz like, kids have a harder time staying away from each other. And I was like, I mean, you have a couple beers, like you talk louder, like, just, ah, doesn't compute. So really, what's the reason why you guys, um, got rid of ski school and got rid of, uh, and turned this into a taproom? I understand the desire to make more money, I get that. But I was like, so what what's that, and the and the the community impact especially? And basically, they came out and they talked about it of like, you know, the kids are shitty and we're not here to be, um, babysitters to to bad parenting. I was like, ski school is, but whatever. So af- after that, downstairs, I go and I get my complimentary beer and one of their board members walks by me and goes, Berkman, that was an excellent question you asked, and I was like, you're on the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, um, if you're gonna continually ask where kids gonna learn to swim in this community, where are they gonna learn to ski?
Yeah.
Anecd- anecdotal, but also.
Well, I'm like, twenty twenty-five bingo card did not have, um, a shakeup in management out there. So, you know, we we could be dealing with different people, I don't know how soon, but, you know, I'll just continue to keep trying to work in the best interest
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
of the community, the board and Ski Cooper.
And we'll keep, yeah, bringing you information as well, and it's not gonna be always like a complaining fest, like I, like, I don't want that, but
Yeah.
did finally come to a head. Um, so Ski Cooper.
I, I just wanna say, when we chatted with, we chatted with, um,
Dan and Pat.
Dan and Pat and John, thank you, um, before we were sworn in.
John.
And specifically asked, like, what was the deal with bringing staff? And they said that if we have something, if the, if there's like a specific thing that we need to bring outside information on to present to the board, that's totally, that's very reasonable. So, we did bring that up to make sure that there was space for that, just to make sure you know that, Adam.
One thing, yes. Great, yeah, and that is, that's a change of tune, and that feels like it came from those, those conversations were productive.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So current, uh, Ski Cooper does not have a summer operations plan. If they wanna do summer operations, they need to have a separate, uh, plan or summer operations plan with the Forest Service. Um, I think all of you, you know, gone somewhere with the ski area in the summer, mountain biking, disc golf, whatever, whole, whole host of things, right, that, uh, can happen, um, out there. Uh, you know, there's options to consider different management agreement for the summer. Uh, cuz also keep in mind, everything out there is an economy asset, yes, indeed, yes, indeed.
Is a counter, yes, yeah.
Um, so anyway, Adam, I'll let you talk about this, cuz I know that a lot of this was coming from you as an opportunity for economic development. And then you guys will see the, you see the line on the bottom of our peak summer, winter park, oh, Winter Park.
This is Winter Park, yeah, so, um, yeah, so, the graphics referencing there, um, Winter Park, uh, you know, they do have summer operations.
Yeah, you did.
Um, and if you look at, um, this is at the resort itself. So this isn't Winter Park as a whole, this is at the resort, the amount of humans that are visiting, um, and by extension, staying in Winter Park overnight. Um, so, um, you can see the July, 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 all the way through twenty-four. And, um, at the end of the day, it's not as high as the winter, but it is summer visitation that's a direct result of having uh, a summer operations plan. And, um, you know, the the story, I think I've already told you all this, but, you know, I I managed a hotel in Lincoln, Hampshire, and our occupancy is seventy percent, and it jumped to ninety-two percent the moment that Loon Mountain introduced a summer operations plan. Um, and we didn't do anything to the hotel. So, from the standpoint of, uh, increasing overnight visitation in the summer, um, this would be a big win. And, you know, the the knee-jerk response, of course, is, well, we already have too many visitors in the summer, um, because of the events. But the reality is, um, those are not people, uh, many, 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 a majority of people who are coming here for our race series events are not staying in Lake County. Um, because we do not have the occupancy, we don't have the beds. So being able to make a sustainable, summer-long, summer operations plan, not only does that spread out, um, where people are visiting in Lake County, um, which is a huge deal, because currently, all of, um, the summer chaos that we feel is concentrated on Harrison Avenue, which is also the start and finish of, um, the races. So, to spread people out is, would be a huge benefit. And then also, you're looking at people who would, these same ultra athletes who would be interested in coming to a place before and after if there were more assets that we had, that they had access to, from a mountain biking or ultra running standpoint. Um, so being able to have a, a summer operations plan, um, especially one that in- involves F and B. Um, the Tennessee Pass Nordic Center, um, though it is for sale, um, that their five-year strategic plan does involve, um, increased summer operations, and they were interested in pursuing, um, biking and hiking and and run, trail running, uh, as part of their operations plan. So it actually, you know, I have been receiving a few calls from people who are just poking around, trying to understand the Tennessee Pass Nordic Center, um, investment. And I think that if you provide to, you know, as a person that does all this kind of recreation, if you would tell me that I could drive ten minutes down the road and have access to two, uh, facilities that offer the same kind of, um, you know, assets, I would be very intrigued, obviously. And then, you know, for me, when I think about transportation, um, if there was a shuttle service, um, that went out to that area and in the summertime, not only is there an inherent opportunity for, through hikers, um, not only from a safety perspective, but the average through hiker spends two hundred dollars a day in every trail community that they visit. And we lose quite a few folks, you know, we hear a lot that folks power through Leadville and Twin Lakes to get to Buena Vista because they can do everything they need to do in Buena Vista, and they can also do everything they need to do in Summit because in, when they, when they get to Summit, there's a free shuttle that takes them to a place that has laundry, shower and a grocery store. Um, so why would they, um, have to risk, um, hitchhiking all the way into Leadville and back, um, for instance?
We don't have hot springs, though.
That is true, hot springs, that's true.
Those through hikers really need to.
Yeah, they're, they're a big thing.
Also, Twin Lakes' infrastructure like cannot support, like they're fully overwhelmed with the amount of
That's right, that's right, exactly. Yep.
people who are just trying to plug in their phone, trying to go to the bathroom, dump their trash.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, that's a huge opportunity.
Yeah, so. And the other thing there is, is that we have a new designation of the National Monument of Camp Hale. So being able to provide access to that area, um, would be a huge consideration from an economic development standpoint. Um, but then also, I mean, the bigger picture things that I think about a lot are, you know, climate change resilience, right? I mean, Ski Cooper is a hundred percent zero snowmaking, a hundred percent natural snow.
Mm-hmm.
As conditions, weather changes, I think it's really important for us. I know that every, every major ski resort that talks about expansion, talks about the fact that chairlifts need to have mountain bike accessibility as part of their planning, because your lifts, especially on the east coast, the length that you're using those lifts for skiing is shrinking, and the the opportunity to use them for mountain biking is growing, or hiking, or et cetera. So, um, it's, it's a con- it's just a consideration as we think about, um, the future of that facility. Um, and again, I think that for me, being able to tie in the Tennessee Pass Nordic Center planning and just being able to disperse people around the community, um, it feels like a, a really low-hanging fruit thing for us to pursue. Um, and again, you know, there's a variety of offerings there that I've off, that I've mentioned, you know, potential partnerships with C and C, Goal. Um, uh, you know, being able to provide camps and being able to provide a venue, a wedding venue, those types of things are all, um, on the table.
And, uh, some of the pushback that we've heard just around some of these conversations is that Ski Cooper is not doing what other resorts do. Like, sometimes when the examples are put out there, they'll say, we're not Winter Park, not that big, da-da-da-da-da. But, uh, there are other resorts that operate in a similar way in Colorado, and I'm doing more research into them. There are some nonprofit managed, uh, ski resorts in Colorado, uh, that have a heavy focus on the community connection side of things to get kids and their families out, engaging in these sports as well.
So, I mean, you know, I guess the, the win, the real big win would be how many of these activities can stretch into shoulder seasons? Cuz that's where, you know, that's the low, lowest point on all those where no one in town is gonna be like, but we're maxed out, there's no food and safe way, you know what? Why are we trying to bring, and I I understand where you've managed to, you know, um, counter that, but like, the larger sentiment of the community is still gonna be there, their perception, and that's what we gotta kind of fight against with some of these proposals. Um, but, I mean, it doesn't really start snowing until, you know, late October, you know, depending on the year, but, um.
We have strong visitation numbers through the end of October, this past year, our October was really strong. And again, that has everything to do with when the leaves are fully off the trees, which is all mother nature.
There's no Aspens out there at Cooper.
Yeah, that's the cliff. November is, is abysmal, and there's no, there's very little we could do about that, so.
We encourage different events.
Yeah, exactly, that's where.
But it doesn't have to be recreational.
Yes.
Cooper turkey trot.
Yeah, yeah.
Turkey trots.
So, it's.
Year, year-round programming at the table, that's really great.
Yeah, it's coming.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, I appreciate the pitch, but to me, it's like Duncan was saying, you know, it's always going after these new shiny things, we don't really have, we're not taking care of what we have. My fear is that it barely breaks even, there's no hotel, we don't have a captured audience like they do in Copper Mountain. I would argue that Copper Mountain, they hardly have any visitors in the summer, and what they do, they won't capture. The place is kind of a ghost town in the summer, and they've done a good job doing that, but, uh, this doesn't feel like low-hanging fruits and this feels like a lot of work. Is it going to, you know, damage the relationship with the winter operators, certainly considering their stance right now? Uh, so I don't know, to me, this is, it's a great presentation, it's a great idea, but, uh, I would wanna focus more on, you know, our existing parks. Maybe Golf Frisbee up by the Fish Atchery, whatever that park, I mean, that's totally underutilized. We could have a wedding venue up there, uh.
So, what's that?
Well, I guess, yeah, one thing to consider is, we, the county, Duncan, wouldn't manage this.
Would not manage this.
No.
Yeah.
This is a management contract, you've, you've put out for a man, you've put out a, for a management contract, the same would be of a winter management contract.
Yeah.
So, that's just something to consider on what you're saying. And I'm more than happy to, you know, I have a good relationship with, with Copper, I'm happy to get the stats, you know, the actual numbers on what their summer asset.
Their, their music stuff brings in a massive amount of people, I think, you know? But I don't, we, I don't know if we can just set up a stage at Cooper and start rocking out or not. Um, the other thing is that we've got all of these already, not all of them, but basically, uh, you know, most, the most part existing within town, and I do think it is a good point to not wanna spread, you know, our, the attention too thin and the expertise of locals, you know, like, how many people can really design and build mountain bike trails here, or, um, set up like this golf course, or, I don't know, yeah, yeah, it's.
We have, we certainly have the local expertise for it, we don't have any mountain bike assets like this at all.
There are.
I'm sorry. No, it's, I mean, we just, you know, again, you know, uh, between Sterling Mudge and the Cloud City viewers, we do certainly have the trail building expertise, and we don't have any mountain biking assets that come anything, we don't have anything close. Swamp Angel is a point-six mile trail, that's the closest thing we have.
That's it, well, and then it goes, doesn't go below that, it's, it's moved to, um, and there's a little bit of it out by the skate park.
But there's a lodge, I do appreciate that, like, this, especially for families, one of the wonderful things about Ski Cooper is that you, it can be a multi-generational experience.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, you, we can, we have wonderful trails and, we have wonderful trails, but I can't like, park my mother-in-law and my infant while I go out on a bike and then switch out with my mother-in-law.
And I hate pedaling, I do.
Also that, my mother-in-law would hate that too.
But again, I, I think, I totally understand your concern, Matt, but again, I think that it's not, this is that, this is a very separate conversation than Socrates over here, no, it's my pet name for the asking the big questions of how do we manage all these things? Um, cuz again, this isn't, this isn't us, this is a management contract, so.
It's us creating an opportunity for someone to see the opportunity.
Yep.
Now, we'll say that there are grant opportunities out there that can be brought into the community to invest in the community through wages
Right.
And just.
Now, we'll say that there are grant opportunities out there that can be brought into the community to invest in the community through wages and just support the local economy to help move these things.
From those grants is the only last couple of years and we're on the hook for all these employees that, you know.
Totally. Totally. But in in the same way that Ski Cooper can't come to us for money, that's that's the thought, that's actually where it came from for me, is the fact that they can't, you know, Ski Cooper can't take on debt financing and they're not coming to us for money. It's all about the strength of their operation.
Right.
I also worry about interest, I mean, we established all this stuff, it costs so much a day or you know, all this cost involved with getting it up and running and then you got the overhead cost per day, the restaurant, the lift ops, all this stuff and then a couple families show up because it's not really steep enough for a really good gravity flow trail, is it?
I think it depends on the design, I think, you know.
Especially when there's Copper's really only twenty-five minutes away.
It's almost, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all I'm saying.
It's almost prohibitive to build on a steeper terrain, good mountain bike trails, I think.
You have to go like this.
Yeah, the the stuff that's built at Copper is all in the blue. Um so they definitely have, they definitely have the vertical.
Yeah, there's nothing gentle over there.
But again, it's it's more and the restaurant, all of those things, that is not the county's concern. Do you know what I mean? Like I said, it's the operator's concern, it's the manager's concern.
So tying into this on our next slide, talk about the master development plan. So, cause all this conversation is very good and will lead to explanations and business cases for potentially summer operations, but also for our winter operations. So, master development plan, Lake County government is the permit holder with the United States Forest Service, it is our master development plan. Say our, the boards, it is the board's master development plan. Winter Park, did they finish theirs or they still going through it? Okay, they are still going through it and that's like totally expanding Vasquez Ridge, all of that, you know, Gondola Town, all, you know, all these things. Um this is a ski areas, well, I think so, master development plan, but business plan for a decade long.
Fifteen years or ten, fifteen years.
Fifteen, right, yeah. So, the last one from Ski Cooper was completed in nineteen ninety-nine. Um you can only do things that are in your master development plan before the forest ser- forest service comes and says, like they did to Ski Cooper, you need to take this building down. Um so there is a pending plan. Um that is with the Ski Cooper Board, but the county has not been involved at all. Um that's a little bit of that more for Adam to talk about, anyway, you have a huge opportunity and the community has a huge opportunity to weigh in on Ski Cooper's master development plan for the next ten to fifteen years. What does that look like? And you guys have the opportunity to heavily influence what that looks like.
What's the, what's the order of operations? Do we ultimately approve the master development plan? Cause it's our lease?
In in an ideal world, yes, and now that the Forest Service is paying attention to this, think that will stick because part of Ski Cooper's excuse was that, you know, for as long as Dan Torso has been here, there's been that many um rangers in this district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is not Pat Murphy or his district who reviews these plans, there's a separate branch of the Forest Service that does this
Yep.
for all skiers. Um so, and there's, I will let, I will try to keep my comments to myself. There's a huge opportunity for you guys to do this, to to engage with this, what does it look like?
Yeah.
I don't know, does it look like bringing the Ski Cooper Board and their leadership and the Forest Service back into this room to say, I believe this is our permit and we would like to weigh in on the master development plan?
Mm-hmm.
That's one option. Is Commissioner Lee going and being at the board meeting, like, so once the county uh get input into the M D P? At some point during this M D P process, the United States Forest Service pushes it out as well because they, because anyone in the U S um can comment on these plans. Right, so at some point, the Forest Service will do that. But before you get to that level, you, permit holder, need to get there.
Chris, what's the legal, what is our legal standing in relationship with our, with our lease, with whoever we're, what is the language about, what is Ski Cooper? And I'm sorry, I'm confused because we are the permit holder, they are the leasee?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so what is our relationship as the permit holder with the leasee as to how we're allowed to be involved in this?
Well, because the the lease essentially provides that they're they're being given the opportunity to occupy and utilize the land
Mm-hmm.
as long as they comply with our permit, the permit we hold.
Mm-hmm.
So it is, uh frankly, had I'd been involved on the front end, I wouldn't have recommended a lease in this situation.
Yeah.
It would have been an operating agreement instead, cause that's more typically how this is handled.
Right. Right.
When's the next, when's the lease up?
Twenty, forty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
There's no termination clause, huh?
Well, yeah.
Well, the termination clause is if they're not.
Is, if they're in default.
Yeah, yeah, they're in default.
If they're in default, which they currently are.
Well, not technically because the deadlines, at least I haven't vetted their response yet in terms of the
Or no.
the notice from the Forest Service gave them certain deadlines to come into compliance or gave us certain deadlines for it to come into compliance.
Okay.
And some of those don't run until June or July.
Yeah.
But it's a service year.
So we're kind of holding.
Which is then, you know.
Yeah, and I know they've started to do some of that.
Yes, they've done, like you took down the chat at the phone or something they weren't supposed to have.
They have. Yeah. And we've been working with them like on the boneyard, which is conveniently what the Ski Cooper Board threw back into the county, my face and like,
The boneyard.
well, you haven't done this, I was like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The portals is another point of contention with the Forest Service, right?
Excuse me?
The portal, the portal.
Portal.
As long as they're not charging for the Disneyland entrance. Which, there are plenty of anecdotal stories from our own staff here and you.
Yeah, it's okay.
You go there and watch their kids go and ski and you don't wanna ski, you gotta pay, how much did you pay, twenty-five bucks?
Yeah. I didn't pay anything, I walked away, I was like, I'm done.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten my ski pass since then.
They're supposed to be public access right there next to the portal.
Yeah, but that's not what they say at the door, you know?
Yeah. So that was, that was a point of contention we brought up, they claim that they don't charge for them. We've had staff here wanna go watch their kids ski, twenty-five bucks to get them to Disneyland.
I'm stuck up lending, especially if you ask.
Yeah, so.
And their their big, their their biggest defense is uphill access, so they they suggest that if they don't, if they were to do a scanner at every um lift, that they don't, they can't afford that cost of having a scanner at every lift, like having somebody scan your ticket at each lift. Um so the portal is a way for them to control, you get through that portal and then they don't have to worry and their biggest concern is that somebody could pay the fifty-nine dollars or pay whatever it is for uphill access and uh then be able to just use the lifts. That they could just slip their armband off and then use the lifts without paying the full price ticket.
I noticed that there are two base lifts at Ski Cooper, ten bone chair on the poma. And how many attendance do they have at the portal with the weekends?
Yeah, yeah.
Two.
Yeah, cool.
Anyway, just not my business, literally, but um.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they're big defenders of the portal, so.
They will, they will die on that hill, yes.
They will.
So, what does it look like to engage um for the county, county leadership, the B O C C,
Yeah.
to engage on this M D P, for you guys also, to gather more feedback from our community to influence the M D P before it gets to the Forest Service level?
Yeah.
That is a, that is an interesting question.
Yeah, also the Forest Service might, they don't approve, I mean, accept it.
That's what, yeah, yeah.
It's a whole distinction.
Yes.
Yeah, a pretty good point.
So, the Ski Cooper Board approves it and then they send it on to the Forest Service, who accepts it?
Oh no, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, or yeah, yeah.
But but I think that it should come via us, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was sure.
Cause we, they approve it, right?
Right, right, right.
You approve.
And the last one was uh in nineteen ninety-nine was put together by S E Group um and it was Ski Cooper Board and the county working together.
Okay.
So imagine some of the current Ski Cooper Board members of this state once.
Oh yeah.
Yes.
It, it's a legacy room.
Yes, indeed, well put, well put.
Um so the Cooper Board creates the master plan, we approve it, Forest Service.
Well, in an, in an ideal world, right, we should work with, we should work with Ski Cooper leadership, which does include their board, but like, you know, they have an executive there who's been in the ski industry for a long time, so we should rely on some of that expertise.
Yeah.
We should collaborate.
Yeah.
B O C C, getting community input, things that you guys wanna see in there, working with staff who engage with this, that impacts their operations
Yeah.
and things that they wanna do for the community, right? Come together, compromise perhaps, and create something to submit to the U S Forest Service because it is our permit.
Yeah, so, yeah, you know, it's it's their, their thing, which I am putting together as part of it. That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they've only got a winter lease.
Right.
And.
See, I'm tying it back to like summer, like if you guys wanna see some summer stuff there, maybe we explore that in the master development plan.
Yeah.
If there's not the appetite for it, alright, you know.
We've just, we've explored it, we've set it up, so it's possible, but it's up to, it's up to investors to decide if it's viable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Talking, but it's also one in ten to fifteen year opportunity.
Right.
To consider that.
Yeah. Very fun, I, this is a fun conversation, especially like when Ben was in here, this like dreamscaping, imagining was possible. It's very exciting, it's so lovely, um I know it's been but I also think it's that wonderful opportunity, which I love talking about.
Yeah. And yeah, I was just gonna say that I I will offer that I I feel as if the um management, specifically of Ski Cooper, feels like the expertise that they're bringing to the master development plan
Mm-hmm.
is the only language that truly matters. Um that that is the position that has been presented in this room at the last meeting was like, at the end of the day, it's like a ski area management plan, it's kind of our, it's like just nuts and bolts of how we're gonna move forward in the industry.
We'll take care of it.
We'll take care of it.
We're doing a great job.
Yes.
Very wonderful.
Right.
Yes.
Why would you look at us?
Yeah.
So there's a lot of opportunity for exciting things in the future and I'm excited to learn we can work something out so that every kid in the county can go out there and learn how to ski and engage with something lifelong and there's career pathways that can lead them into something as well, either
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
uh through an athletic venue or an industry side of things and.
A terrain park that the kids wanna shred, that it's not something that is a perk traditionally, you know, over skiers.
Yes.
Yes, and me. I know Matt has to leave soon, Matt, is there anything you wanna say or ask questions about?
Yes, yeah. So I can just real quick for these, just for some other context, so Lauren and I spent some time, we looked at this case study, Winter Park Resort and City and County of Denver, City and County of Denver owns Winter Park, they have um um they have a lease uh with uh Altera, anyway, Altera has a lease, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's Altera.
Um so it's an operating agreement lease though, right?
Right.
And they're, they're a private, they're a health company, they're probably not a nonprofit, like.
Yes.
Yes.
They, correct, correct, so Winter Park pays a set lease fee, then pays a percentage on any revenue generated above that. Um Winter Park makes twenty million, now they're making a hundred million, Winter Park would pay the eighty plus the base rent. Um and those payments go, are dedicated to Denver Parks and Rec. Um and I, Winter Park has a relationship with Denver Parks and Rec, where they host the Denver Parks and Rec kids for free, they do stuff on the front range, there is a five-member board, two of which are appointed by the mayor of Denver. Um and then I'm just going quick, cause I know now it's gonna leave. So we were talking with them, we were talking with the C E O and then, so, talk about your M D P or like, or something like this, what is that? The underlying quote, we don't close the door because at the end of the day, they are landlords. Um so that has been one of the things we have been like looking at, um you know, one of the frustrations we've had with our board. Um and yes, corporate structure, different entity, whole host of different things, right?
Mm-hmm.
Got it, but I would just want you guys to know that there are other models out there between a municipality, a local government, and an operator of a spirit.
Yeah.
It's where, um.
This is gonna start with really hard conversations in that boardroom.
It's gonna be awesome.
You fucking gosses, dude.
Well, yeah, cor- correct me if I'm wrong, correct me if I'm wrong at any s- stage of this, but
Just slay.
I, what it appears right now is there is a sense, a very different sense than what you just explained within Ski Cooper that as long as Ski Cooper's board is happy with the management, as long as management is happy with Ski Cooper board, that those are the only opinions that truly matter and that until twenty forty-eight, there really isn't a way, they feel very protected in terms of the amount of recourse that can come against them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as they're not coming to Lake County Government for money.
They feel sheltered.
Well, cause because their bylaws are set up in that way.
Yeah. Um.
And it's a very.
Well, this.
And their lease agreement is set up in that way.
There has not been much change in that room in a long time and we're proposing change and that's gonna be tough.
Change is scary.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, they're five oh one C four standing though, like.
The C four is.
Which it's, well, the C four, and the thing about that is kinda going back to what Ryan was talking about, is it requires engagement with the community, requires them to do that.
And that's. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I've been putting there.
How much legal peace does that have, right?
That's what I was gonna say, and that bill party that that you think they do checks that box, which I would, I would disagree with that, but.
Yeah. Well, they're they're providing employment for a large portion of the community, they can bring it, they got a million things they can bring up.
It's a non, that's not a nonprofit status.
So the.
It is a benefit to the community though.
It's a private.
They could argue that, is what I'm saying, I I don't agree with that.
No, I don't.
So the I R S designated title for one of the five oh one C four is civically, social welfare organizations and local associations of employees created to promote community welfare for charitable, educational or recreational purposes, which under that definition,
Yeah. The recreation.
it is very strongly arguable that they haven't followed this.
They don't, they're, but but that's part of it too, and I I said to your prior board that it's just like, do you wanna find a way for us to to revisit whether or not we have to continue with this lease till twenty forty-eight?
Yeah.
I have to do that, yeah.
Yeah, it just seems like there's plenty of leverage on the county side, I I would.
Well, but the other thing I will say too is, you know, they've got their own lawyer, depends on how much money.
A very verbose lawyer, yes, yeah.
We'd wanna burn out Paula Cooper's reserves.
Yeah, yeah.
They would do.
They would, die on that hill.
This is, yeah. This is a perfect example, though, of agreements made in the past that were not with us.
Correct, yes, very grateful that you've got us straightened out for now on time.
I don't think it needs to come to that, we got Andy and we're just gonna work with them and try and repair the relationship and
No.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have.
You gotta create the relationship.
That's what I was gonna say.
We're gonna do, yeah.
Yes, it's not, that's what I'm thinking.
We're gonna hit the reset button, start fresh with.
It has to be a relationship.
You don't wanna pick them up and fight, no.
I'm only, I'm only saying that I would have expected a little more like give and take, a little more like mutual respect within the relationship because it's not as like
Yeah.
it's not as um it's, it doesn't seem like they're on as solid ground as they have been in the past.
I'm gonna forward an email that that I I sent to the prior commissioners and and other staff and folks in this area to my conversation with their attorney and and from his perspective, it seems like they want to have a good working relationship. They might not have come across that way in the meeting and stuff.
We'll rock on, let's go.
Yeah, so let's let's use that perhaps, so we were saying, hey, we need to have parameters for us.
And and. In the spirit of that, I will offer that um that my staff and Ski Cooper's staff have had much more productive conversations around what future marketing partnerships will look like after this E C C.
Awesome.
And maybe some of the kids' programs are spearheaded by the county, because their position is our rules or our permit doesn't allow us to favor some kids over other kids. If we offered a free ski pass to fourth graders in Lake County, we'd have to do it for fourth graders across the whole state and that's, I think as I understood that.
That is, that is an interpretation of an argument.
That's my position.
Uh Winter Park offered all kids in Grand County, um three free lift tickets.
for the season, cause Grand County's on a four day thing too. What I'm saying is if, you know, how many fourth graders do we have? Forty?
Sixty?
It was like fifty to sixty.
Thirty?
Sixty?
In school, en- enrolled or is that?
Yeah, uh, in the school district, that's not including any homeschool kids. Also, I do wanna make the point that I personally don't believe within their revenue, they would be losing everything if they followed the model, kinda like what Tim mentioned, because those who are going to go out and ski will purchase a season pass.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
That's just something that they want to do, which is awesome, but those who can't, there are other options to be more open welcoming.
Yeah.
And also, no one goes to Ski Cooper for the world-class triple back diamonds. It's a family ski.
Not a lot of puckered factors.
Yeah, it's a family ski hole, which is great to, for business to, to engage schools from across the states
Yeah.
that want to come and teach their kids a friendly entry level uh experience.
Yeah.
I guess all I'm saying is if if there's gonna be sticking points like this from them, or they're just gonna say, we're not gonna do that, and we have a contingency plan, we have a a county-based plan, like if fourth grader skiing is important to us, let's make a way to, I think that should be a goal, or sixth graders, or whatever it is, you know, it's kind of a traditional outlook on skiing, if if they're not willing to do it, then maybe we are.
Well.
We still have, they they still provide benefit in the jobs, the tech, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The tickets, uh, they're an asset, so I I just wanna be really careful.
Yeah.
Going down this road of aggression.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before we try, let's, hey man, there's new folks in town, let's see what we can work out, and if you're not willing to do this, we're willing to buy them tickets if you give them skis, or if you help them with some lunch tickets or something like that, you know?
So, and and I think one of the potential workarounds is they donate passes to nonprofits.
Yes.
And so part of it is, do we set up a recreation fund through the Lake County Community Fund and have them donate enough tickets for everybody to the community fund, so it goes to a nonprofit, it's not becoming, you know, not discriminatory and say, for, you know, this program, you know, whatever. I think there are ways that we can try to negotiate with them, because they, they do donate some,
Yeah.
Yeah.
cause I've got two in my, some in my pockets.
Oh, next, I think the the frustration coming from us commissioners that we've, we've had these conversations or tried to have these conversations, and we're just patted on the head and say, no.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. That's the, that is the term.
You're like, okay, um.
It feels so similar to the city.
The city, Mount Mexico Golf Course.
And I. Yeah, and I and I also appreciate what Matt's saying, I think we have an opportunity for, again, for us to start with a new relationship, to start with a new face, and and also to look out for taxpayers and their assets.
Yeah.
Kinda to help the kids ski, if we, if we say the reason, you know, I'm sorry, fourth graders, you're not gonna ski this year, cause Ski Cooper
Yeah.
won't cooperate, instead of having a plan B saying, hey man, this is important to us, let's have a some ski, snowboard program, and uh, we'll make it happen for you.
What does participating in the local clubs look like now that they gotta drive copper and deal with shuttle buses and everything, instead of just going ten minutes up the road?
That is definitely exclusionary to kids who are lower resources.
That's.
So.
That's exactly.
That's what I've been talking to Clouseau Mountain Sports about, full circle, a long time ago, when I was in preschool in the early two thousands. Uh, there was a ski program for the center as well to take kids out there for a week. Um.
Me too, Brian, me too.
Yeah, so, there's a lot of opportunity within here, and I'm excited for what comes next, but uh, I, within that email, I can share just some of the conversations that I had that of just the historical progression of what got us here with Ski Cooper.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh, just making things affordable and accessible for them.
Yeah. Well, most kids are building a relationship with copper, as opposed to like having a wonderful relationship with them.
They do it sick hard, but.
I love that word.
They have the advantage of superior terrain, for sure.
For sure.
Well, I got, but, you know, like, moving forward, we'll try not to, um, dog on Cooper, you know, like, it's it's not my intent, I don't think it's anyone here's intent, but we gotta also
Definitely.
remember acknowledge all the great things that they're doing, and all of the, you know, um, wonderful work they've done, and that, you know, we just, there there are just some shift the needle a little bit in directions, changes that are gonna help local youth especially, and you know, the accessibility for them, and uh.
And Ski Cooper's longevity, in the end, too.
The industry's long, yeah, I mean, that's another angle there too, but, um, yeah, we'll approach this in a less confrontational way, hit the reset button with them and, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
See you guys Monday.
Matt, Ski Cooper better.
See you. Thanks, Commissioner Bullock.
Thank you.
I'll watch it all on YouTube, so.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, he's gone.
Yeah.
Um, so we did have the feasibility study in LCIS on here, I will defer to you, I can find another time, and all three, since I think they're topics of interest.
Are you on here for another part of this?
Let's, yeah, let's get to what. And then we'll.
I have to go to the restroom first, get out.
Yeah, by all means, let's take a couple minute break here.
I'm so sorry. Do I look like an old person?
Do you wanna?
Yeah, I'm okay, just whatever these guys came here for.
Let's do that, and then we can be done with it.
Does that make any sense, or is that just me speaking from a place of not knowing, not knowing what they've got?
Um, no, they know what they got, so we can uh, we can go over that feasibility study, um.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, and then the other one is.
So, and then, uh, we'll save LCIS for another day.
Okay.
Since I think you guys, everyone's very interested in us.
Okay, who with this, like, you got like another hour?
Yeah.
I heard.
Like, half hours.
Oh, is it, okay.
It depends on questions, right?
Cool, yeah, that's that's our fault.
No?
So many questions. Always lots of questions.
But then there's someplace in Silverstone, we can also use.
So they have a common.
Yeah, copycat, yeah.
Sorry?
It's kind of, it's not a strength, for sure. Yeah. Nice, cause that that's you guys do a ton of it.
Yes. Yeah.
I think we have, uh, good amount of history, and we wanted this to be.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah.
Yeah. I just, you know, every time somebody walk out, I'm like. Very smart, you men. Shut our hands specifically, but. Yeah, you too, too.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that is a, the amount of times I've sat in here and then like heard, ah, you know? Yeah, so.
And the worst is when it's some elderly senior who hobbles up to the door, and they barely see, and then they get there and they're like.
I know, I know. Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
And then they turn around and leave, and you're like, dude, it just took that guy more effort to walk from, you know, to walk in here than it takes us to climb a fourteen mountain.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Right.
I might stand for this.
Okay.
Update, update.
Okay. Okay.
So we're talking about the feasibility study, okay.
Yes. So, the impetus of this was at the end of twenty.
Are we back on?
Oh yeah, we were never, oh, sorry, we were never on.
What do you mean? We didn't record it?
No, we're recording, I just, I didn't hit pause.
Yeah, cool.
Oh, okay.
Transpired.
Here we get to hear our stories about watching people walk up to the clerk's door and have to turn around and leave.
I, did you tell him while I was done?
Uh, we, I was just talking about how disappointing, how hard it is to watch people walk up there and bang on the door all day, and not be able to get county services.
It's never moving.
Um, yeah. So, at the end of twenty twenty-three, we're kind of in a quandary of like, okay, so we've, you know, had some discussions with uh, the school district, the prior administration about LCIS, we all know um, about the pool, the pool was closed. We had, uh, you know, kind of first year end with the pros master plan, pros director, the three deputies, so the end of twenty twenty-three, it was like, okay, what, what is it that can be done, because there's still, you know, continuing um, tenure from the community of rec center, um, uh, indoor youth space, community center, pool, um, indoor space, right, we get it, it is Leadville, they're near here. Most of the time, want something to do indoors, love playing outside, but I want something to do indoors, besides drink, okay?
Especially after COVID, we were all stuck inside with each other, and like, where else could we go?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so that was kind of the impetus of this, so we worked with DOLA, we did receive a grant to have to pay for half of this feasibility study. And, so really what it was is we knew that we're gonna see if a community center slash rec center, if it's gonna be financially feasible for Lake County. The board gave us a broad uh, programmatic areas, they're like, alright, recreation needs to include aquatics, the library, senior center, childcare, office for pros. So, uh, recreation to include aquatics, we know the uh, estimated costs, I think these are twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three dollars to repair the pool is like fourteen million, that's just the pool, that's just the pool, nothing else around there, right? So like, okay, if you're gonna spend that kind of money, like, what else can we get? Library, the library is one of the county's assets that is in pretty decent shape, however, the entire thing, including the drywall, is built out of asbestos.
Asbestos.
Um, and the library kind of, they're kind of out of space, right, they have library things, tool library, the kids, the kids in this community and other, other people in this community do really like the library, they love their library, so space can be tight at the library sometimes.
And they need more shelves, like, the the book selection's pretty slim, you know, like, it's just, having had firsthand experience of
Yeah.
having to get rid of books, because we're ordering these books, you know, it's almost like every time a new popular book comes out, there's ten books we're getting rid of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it broke my heart to do that, that was.
Yeah.
crushing, like, I do not wanna get, ever have to get rid of books, make a big library.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, yeah. Um, senior center, you guys, you know, uh, know down where that is, down by Huck Finn. Senior center, that building, I think is from like nineteen thirty-six, um, you know, at the top of climax there, the office building where climax, where you go to get into the mine, or when you drive by, there's that one building right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Same make and model as our senior center.
Oh, awesome.
Oh, yeah.
It came down, it came down from the mine, um, for all intents and purposes, it's in okay shape, the roof does need some repairs. Um, but we also know that there's a uh, changing demographic of seniors of uh, the silver tsunami that we're in the midst of uh, with folks retiring, but as as the boomers age, they're not like their parents, they're not really into congregant meals, they wanna do, they wanna play pickleball, they wanna go walk around the gym, they, there's a different need and want from the seniors.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
They wanna do what they've always done.
Yeah.
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 Um, childcare, you know, that there's a lack of childcare providers in this community, and then always, you know, bright start is kind of like, oh, understand where we're going, what we're doing,
Yes.
cause that's a big capital campaign, and then of course offices for uh, pros and gold staff. So, got initial instrument, uh, initial estimates in, um, for this kind of, for the whole shebang, right? Eighty million, like, okay, that's, we can't afford that. Um, so, um, prior board worked with OLC, um, and I shouldn't say, during this process, right, we had community meetings, town halls, and feedback meetings, hear what the community wants, right, like, alright, we get it, you want a pool, what kind of pool? Um, cause it's not the kind of pool that we have. Um, the people want like a zero, zero foot entry uh, pool, so like young kids can get into it easier.
Mm-hmm.
They want the the kid area to be warmer than than the lap lane, that always, yeah.
Yes.
Old school.
I'm honestly worried about hypothermia with my children.
I, you know, this is our first time I've heard that, um.
Honestly. Yeah.
So, um, anyway, um, sorry, if you pull this up or not.
Tim, why did we even ask those question, like, we knew we couldn't afford that, why did we ask them?
So, part of that, uh, so part of that sometimes when we do feasibilities and stuff like that is so, so like I talked through, like, looking at those other facilities that we do have, of like, also trying to gauge, like, where's the community on that?
Yeah.
Do we really care about the library? Oh, okay, we care about the library. Same with like the senior center and that. And even knowing that we can't afford those things, it also gives something, I would argue, defensible to the board and to county leadership of like, look, we get it that you guys want this, here is the cost, how, we can't pull this off.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, and sometimes starting big and then parsing down to really what the community wants, or tells us they want, is a way we can um, get
Yeah.
to where, to where we're, we're gonna show you where we ended up, um, today. So, board gave guidance, um, they want something, um,
Yeah.
a previous board, it's gotta be less than thirty-nine, okay, cool. So we cut out, you know, library, senior center, childcare, so we're just really going with a a recreation center. So, out of this, um, it came that indoor recreation and aquatics were the priority. So, we kinda looked at these five uh, options for the initial programming, like, if we just did, if we just did a weight room and a gym, you're gonna like that. If we just did uh, part of the recreation space and a small pool, uh, you know, so we went through um, those uh, various things as well. So where we landed, uh, based on community feedback, is, sorry, is option three, recreation center plus a larger aquatics, yes.
There was no option of just aquatics?
Um, we, I think we had discussed it, but like, if you're just going to build a pool and spend that capital.
You don't actually.
You might as well.
Yeah.
Throw something on with it, too, cause the pool is the expensive piece.
Okay.
All that mechanical, everything that goes into that compared to, you know, like St. Street Gym, right, we can throw up a big rectangle with the roof and a hardwood floor, like, it's not gonna cost as much as a pool.
Okay.
Um. So this is kind of where we uh, ended up with, so cardio space, indoor, you know, that running, walking space, like a, uh, we call it group exercise rooms. An aquatic center, which I'll show you the design here in a second, a child watch space, which is not childcare, but if you wanna go to the gym, get your workout in, um, there's a child watch space for the kids to be watched, you know, for an hour, hour and a half, something like that, and of course, admin locker rooms and some of that other support space. Um. So, looking at that, um, we've estimated out the capital costs between eighteen and a half to twenty point two million. The annual operating subsidy, and then the projected annual visitation was all part of the feasibility uh, study as well. So, we'll talk more about the subsidies and the operating costs here in a second, I have a slide on that. So, this is um, the feedback that we received from the community on what they want, um, the, on on what they want for an aquatic center. Do folks still want the lap lanes? Yes, but they want a zero-depth place for people with kids to teach their kids how to swim, or for that to be in there and to have some kind of just, you know, play space. Um, folks also wanted a hot tub.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So, e- everything pretty much is play space below the lanes?
Period.
Yes.
Like, there's like flowers and logs and stuff in that zone, okay, and like a slide, and like, what about, um,
Yeah. Yeah.
you know, from a citizen's perspective, that climbing wall that was in there, that thing was awesome, and then, was it, would that be something that would be like attached to the side of,
We still have it?
Yeah.
you know, the the play area or something, or in this plan?
I think we could, I think we could put it back in there.
You you've got the latest?
I don't know if they're safe, no, I don't have the latest.
Last week.
Yes, and, yes, so, the latest. Yes, uh, yes, so the latest iteration includes, you know, something like a zip line or climb. You know, uh, it's two separated spaces.
Mm-hmm.
So you can manage to dim water temp, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Plus it's easier to manage from a chemistry point of view.
Yeah.
Chemistry, right, so if there's
And also kids, I think, I saw that and I was like.
Yes. If there's an accident, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not losing both bodies of water, right?
You have two separate waters.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we're approaching things in a way that checks boxes for all the age groups, you know, like the young teens and stuff
Yeah.
Yeah.
aren't gonna wanna be playing on little kitty stuff, so if they stop showing up.
That, that's the hard part, right? Creating a facility which is, is multi-use.
Mm-hmm.
As, as you can make it, right? So, uh, by splitting off the different pools, the leisure pool and the lap pool, you automatically splitting an age, sort of, right?
Yeah.
So, uh, we talked yesterday that maybe the lap pool goes from three foot six to ten foot. Uh, so the ten foot depth, you can have a zip line or kids can do, older kids can do bombs or facade or whatever.
Cool.
Um, so yeah, try and mix that, that, that user ship up.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, well, I think we've come, we're beginning.
Yeah, and I apologize for dissecting these pictures, like it's a final plan like that. It's like, I know we're not there yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just a draw.
It just, it pops into my head and I gotta spit it out or else I'll, it'll, I'll forget it.
Yeah. And getting, a lot of the stuff in, in the leisure pool will be splash pad type activities, pool versus dump water there, you know. Uh, and inflatable sort of activities as well, right? Get space for lessons, right? That's where you're gonna ma- make some revenue, um.
Okay, cool, thanks.
And we've been working, um, you know, closely with uh school district, CMC and the city, keeping them up to date with this feasibility study moves forward, um. Because we now have dual feasibility studies uh with the city, um.
What's the city feasibility?
Um, alright, so back, so also at the beginning of twenty twenty four, um, the city uh bought the convention center by the mining museum.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, were they awarded the grant for the feasibility study?
I have no idea.
Oh, anyway, I don't wanna, I don't wanna talk about that. Let's do this.
Yeah. Yes. But anyway, we have been working closely with school district, city, CMC, having this collaborative approach, getting that feedback cuz they kind of have access to those key audience and then it's also just good to communicate out to them as well, um, on where we're at. Especially, you know, when we all share resources. So. There's the money piece, right? So if we're looking at option three, um. This is kind of where we landed based on community feedback. You see square foot, you see the capital cost. Um, our service area population. Uh, then they projected out what visitation would look like. They also broke down for us what an annual operating cost would look like, and that's inclusive of utilities and labor, um. And then.
Hi Cindy.
Wait a minute, this. Please Cindy, um, thank you Cindy.
Thank you Cindy.
Um. And then we talk about uh cost recovery. So when we talk about cost recovery, that means, you know, what is it that, um, what is that subsidy amount that Lake County government is subsidizing so people can still access it? But then on the flip of that, what are people paying to get into the facility where we can make up some of the cost of operating the facility? Yes.
So, uh, this was done before four A passed, four A?
Four A.
Yes, this was done.
This was done before four A passed.
Yep.
Cuz I remember looking at this and everybody being so confused about how much it would cost for a visit. Um, this, with collaboration from the city, this would totally be manageable. Yes, we should still continue to put money as the county into like, into potentially eventually replacing this asset in a capital management plan, but we would absolutely be able to
Yeah.
run this.
Yes.
And what plus more, like what on earth, I'd be legally gonna do with all that money, right?
That's an excellent question.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
You're very.
We are all curious.
Yes, um, so yes, you are correct commissioner, um, with the passage of four A, which is the city's sales tax to go to a uh affordable aquatic center, it most certainly could uh go towards this.
Mm-hmm.
Which then you'll see on the subsidy per visit, so
It was a zero.
twelve fifty is what you pay to get in.
Well, that's the subsidy.
Never mind. That's the subsidy, there you go.
Yeah. Right, stop it.
Sorry.
We already did this so many times.
Long week. I know. So anyway, so twelve fifty per visit, right? So when folks come uh to the door, that would be the subsidy amount, so we would be subsidizing you twelve dollars and fifty cents.
But we wouldn't be.
Well, if you had that, the annual operating, the four hundred thousand, I mean, you know, so yes, I think, okay, yes, back to your point, this was done, um. Uh, before enduring like the passage of four A, now that four A is passed.
It's not before four A. Bye Adam.
See you Adam, thank you.
Uh, what are we gonna do?
Everybody gets to go for free all the time.
Yeah, I think, is that like more of like what our cost per visitor is like, so, and then we're recouping? Where's the recovery cost coming from? That's the four A.
They don't have that on this.
Okay.
That what the actual cost of entry would be.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you assume, well, like we're anticipating that four A is gonna collect roughly four hundred thousand dollars. That covers option three, that covers the uh annual operating cost and that's what that money can go to.
Yeah.
So we can earn, we can earn up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. But, which is what makes up for that subsidy, where it's like saying, just saying, this is how much is it gonna cost us to run it and use through. This is how much we can earn from this kind of facility. So we would have to make up this much per visit to get to this. Does that make sense, Andy?
Yeah.
Yeah, but with four A being passed.
Changes.
It can only go to this column, so that, so that's like sweet, actually. Yes, it costs that much, but we have that much year after year after year. And so we can earn this much, that could go to something else. But we wouldn't have to subsidize.
For the operations.
Yeah.
But that, so that would probably have to go through a debt, towards a debt payment to actually pay for the original facility.
Yeah.
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah, you gotta get your thing for, for return, bro.
For sure, I'm just saying, it, it doesn't have to go to us operating it, it can go, all that revenue can go into paying off.
Yeah. Yeah.
It can go into whatever we want, the debt.
Yeah.
You know, probably like the tiered entry fee that would drop if the payment went down or company.
Yes. Or depending on your residency.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, that's what Golden did with theirs.
I, I would just say though, that, that two hundred fifty thousand dollars though is unlikely to cover the debt service for the capital cost.
No. Yes, totally, totally.
Well.
I'm just saying, we don't have to worry about that.
Yes.
We don't have to worry about operating and debt.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. We have looked at this, so uh with Stiefel, who helped with this COP. Um, you guys could do a COP for this if you wanna. Lots of possibilities, right? But what you can also do is if you, um. Um. And thank you, the sales tax uh number, so right here, so how would you pay for a COP? You would increase the, you know, the required, the sales tax by, you know, let's just say by half.
By half a percent.
Mm-hmm. Um.
Although that, that's not right, but yeah.
There by five, five four.
Yeah.
Um. So there are options, and so that was part of the scope of the feasibility study, was like, cool, we got these fancy drawings based on community feedback. Well, how are we gonna pay for it, right? Um, outside of existing revenues, so this is where we looked at it with Stiefel on evaluating, you know, countywide sales tax, um. And, you know, basically how to pay for that.
So that's the argument against, we can't afford this. Well, there's the, those interest rates I'm sure are changed.
Yeah.
That, that wouldn't be that low anymore. Correct.
Wouldn't it be lower?
It would be lower, I imagine.
Isn't our, isn't our COP at a higher rate than that?
No, COP is a four. Is it four five five?
I thought it was five, but.
Yeah.
I think it's four five five.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, there, but that is a point in time interest rate from the, the day they pulled that, um.
Yeah, yeah. What does a half a percent interest or a sales tax increase look like for your average person on Safeway?
So Safeway is a hard one because, um, babe, choose a different, choose a, Safeway, Safeway is a hard one
Okay, for uh.
because there's a whole host of things at Safeway that are not taxed.
They're taxed differently.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, so.
For somebody buying building supplies, you know, like.
It's like your restaurant. Or going to a restaurant.
Right.
Yeah.
Or going to Smokies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so.
It's a half penny.
Yeah, so on a dollar.
A dollar.
So if you're spending a dollar.
So fifty cents and maybe a hundred bucks.
Yep.
A dollar for every two hundred dollars spent.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Does it cost more? Yes, it does. Is it shared, you know, across visitors and residents alike? Yes, it is, um.
But it's the only way to share it across everyone, including out of area visitors.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, that might be a compelling point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How bad do people want it? You know, how this seems like a feasible, hence the term of the study, way to move forward with this, but, um.
The question is the appetite.
Yeah.
Before.
Right.
It's not, it's not really about like, is this the right choice? Cuz this is how we afford what the community's been asking for.
Without taxing this anything, you know, overload of county money or taxpayer dollars.
Right.
If, if the pool initiative hadn't passed this, this past year, I would, I would be saying, yeah, it's really dicey because previous to that, our last sales tax initiative crashed and burned all the debt and we tried to get it for the justice center.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, but the fact that the pool went past may, makes it a little more favorable for this type of the project versus the justice.
Yeah. Right, we've already determined how we're gonna take care of it, now we just gotta make it.
And I gotta build it, right?
And here's what it's gonna cost you when you're going out to eat, you know, if you got a hundred dollar dinner bill or a hundred dollar
Yeah.
pair of boots at a local sports store or something, it's gonna cost you an extra fifty cents.
Yeah.
And that's gonna build our pool and our rec center, I mean.
It's better than the middle levy too.
And then the cities. Yeah, and then.
It's so much better than that.
And then the city's sales tax rate can go to those operations, perhaps maybe deferred maintenance, we don't know.
Well, no.
Who knows?
Can't wait.
Depends on how you write your ballot language.
It'll be up to the, up to the voters, you know, like I'm okay with, you know, say wanna do it, I'm.
Well, you will be writing the ballot language.
Yes.
Not me specifically, like I'm great conversation.
Now I'm in your chair, this is fucking trouble now.
Alright, hold on, I gotta get to work.
Yes, um. But it does, it matters immensely how you write ballot language or anything that you refer to the voters, just.
Yeah. It's, we need people like Magellan or whoever does that stuff to, or they study.
And they, they do the polling, they do the polling, um, look forward to see if it's gonna pass, um.
Oh, polling, okay.
And they, the city recently commissioned, I guess last year, commissioned a study about what the appetite was for full percent. A full percent, just on city taxes, because they wanted to work with the pool, but potentially, they didn't.
Yeah.
They are obvi- they're working at, they're over budget, so they need more money to support all of their operations.
Mm-hmm.
So they looked at what it would be to be, to pass a full percent, and it looked like it was, um, there was enough support within the city to pass that kind of sales tax. I'm curious what it would be in the county, but at least we do know that the city has been polled.
And so this is a very, this is a very important piece. Lake County levies a four percent sales tax within our boundaries.
Mm-hmm.
The amount of that four percent that is collected within city limits is remitted to the city of Leadville.
Yes.
This proposal would not go to the city.
Right.
This would only go towards the recreation center.
Right.
Which is for the benefit of everyone, but those revenues would not go to the city of Leadville.
Yeah. So the, the, the sales tax increase would be municipal and county and the portion that's increased within the municipal would defer to the county's pool, rec center, okay?
Yeah.
And we.
The whole kit and caboodle. Sorry, were you gonna finish your question?
No, no, I'm thinking out loud, which I really need to
I love that. No, 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 don't, don't stop, I love it.
Um. So what, what I see is the, the sales tax increase on the bigger project. Like, okay, you go out and spend a hundred dollars, it's an extra seventy three cents for the bigger project. It'd be interesting to see, you know, like, or, or maybe think about building the smaller project with the seventy point, zero point seven three percent. And in, in the interest of like getting it paid off faster, less interest. Things of that nature, cuz the interest really is always a sticking point for me on these projects, you know, we're paying, we're borrowing the money. By the time it's paid off, it's cost us a lot more than what we've kinda sold to the voters, you know? Um, I gotta understand how interest works too. I, I know people are, you know, are savvy, I've
Well.
anyone who's had to pay for a car or a home or anything, you know, or credit card. But, um, no one likes interest, I mean, you know, whatever we could do to clamp that down might be another.
But I think there's, there's two, two changes or like opportunities here on this slide. Number one is that I remember Lauren specifically reached out to pros, I remember, to ask them how important a gym was.
Yep.
And the gym is incredibly important.
Yes.
Because we are packed to the gills when it comes to our gym usage in this county.
Those are all private industry, or is there public gyms or?
So we have, so we have the Sixth Street Gym.
Public, Sixth Street, all the school district gyms.
LCIS, yeah, and CMCs.
Yeah.
Just, oh, like, like sports, gymnastics, okay, I'm like, how many people are here pumping out?
Oh, it's crazy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just two knowledge laws, I'm fit, you know, I'm fit in the suite, I'm fit in the suite center.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, alright.
This is a gymnasium.
A gym, yeah, sorry.
That clears up a lot for me on this. I'm like, you can not have the weight room attached to the, you know.
So. Pros is really into the weight room.
Yeah.
So I'm saying is that the second one is, seems to be most needed by the community. Like, wanted by the community at the top, but we know from our departments or the professionals that it's the second one that's actually also needed, so. So that, but then also the ballot, the forget, the city's ballot language. Obviously, they're gonna need to find another place to park those dollars that they are collecting. And if there's a way that we can work with the city, work with PB Swims to kind of like clean up that ballot language and push the full initiative, to say, yes, great, you got us operating costs. If we do this, it's actually gonna be too much, but we could pay it off quicker if we could use those sales tax dollars, not just for operations, but also for capital.
You had, I say the ballot language, you, you have to, the use of those funds has to be within the scope of the ballot language.
That's what I'm saying, is we have an opportunity to work with them to have a, a campaign to potentially change.
So a new ballot is what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
I thought you were talking about being one that passed, okay.
Nope, no, I understand that we voted for that, yeah.
Because also the current ballot language is specifically for an aquatic center.
I know, yeah.
Right, so it may or may not be applicable to operation of the recreation side of it.
Right, which is a, like, yes, we, that needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
And we can see from all the wonderful feasibility study that just happened, that, that's not while, yes, it helps, that's actually not a viable way to use taxpayer dollars to tax our city, anyway.
Also, we have here or take a month, eight months of winter in Leadville.
Yeah.
How, everyone wants to go outside and indoor space is also pretty wanted.
Yeah.
Um, for anyone who wants to do something not in the corner in this.
Yeah, exactly. Anyway, I'm just saying there's opportunity here. Anyway, I'm just saying there's opportunity here, and let's make sure we're getting what we need now, so we don't have to go back and spend more money trying to get that asset that we also need.
Yeah, future could prove it.
Yes, yes. What are we going to want in the future?
If we can very clearly spell this out, that this is not gonna cost property taxes, no levies, you know, all the taxpayer dollars in ways that they are not able to vote on it and have a voice themselves, you know.
That's why we need a good campaign, right? Like if the city could work with us, if PB Swims could work with us and the county, like if we could all get on board on a well-run collaborative campaign, I think that has a lot more promise of being passed than us trying to like pull this across the finish line on our own.
Yes. The it would be
Don't worry.
Yeah, it'd be a very hard conversation, um, none of this is easy, you guys know that.
Why not? This thing is like a really easy conversation.
Yeah. That's only a dog can do, I think.
Yes. No, I mean, yes, but also it depends on how you say it, like we're being, the city's being taxed anyway, so that money, if we do nothing, that money goes into a pit and we can never ever touch it.
Wait, isn't that being held for future?
But that's the, it it's purpose, it it's only for that purpose, and so we can't, city can't use it for something else.
But we have to build it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
And the the city can't use it for to build the pool.
Yeah.
Right.
They cannot build a pool with that money.
The it's just for maintenance or just maintain operating, yeah, um.
Offering, yeah.
So so I think that like, yeah, I understand that this might be hard for people to understand, but ultimately like this, something has to happen next, we don't get to just like say, well, it's good enough now.
Yeah.
Nothing happens next.
No, you're right. Well, the ball's rolling, now we need to have the rec center field of dreams.
Yes, so, excellent, um, so that's kind of leading us to where we are at now, um. So the team uh is working on the conceptual design of the center on the community field site, we'll talk about that in a second. We do need to update the cost estimates for construction and building foray, what does that look like? Um, look at the operations pro forma for the facility, um, updating that. And then, you know, completion and presentation of the final report, so you know, like within the next two months, it can be a final report.
Yeah.
Your guys' feedback on it of what it looks like to present up to you guys, but then also up to the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and some options that the community uh has to decide on, and we're, we are looking at guidance from you all, um, so if you wanna do it this year, um, the board of county commissioners can refer the sales tax measure to its populace, so that could happen this November. Um. Uh. You know, if the sales tax is approved, you know, February, March twenty twenty six, work on issuing a COP for the construction costs. We also do a bond measure on November twenty twenty five as well, see if that, you know, if that's a different route, we can we can look at those
Mm-hmm.
uh models as well, so, and probably from like March twenty seven to March twenty eight, um, start building, um.
Go swimming.
Go swimming. Um.
Two questions.
Yes.
Number one.
Yes.
Every one of these conversations that I was part of during the feasibility study inevitably got fairly run over by by the questioning of of why we're not renovating LCIS.
Yeah.
So can you please give us a background on what was the work that went into figuring out LCIS, and is there any I know that we would not be able to get what what we want from a new build out of renovating LCIS, but I also just want to respect that like the impression is um saving of taxpayer dollars, so help us understand.
Yes.
Oh, is that next? I'm so sorry if I pulled over.
It's it's alright, um.
Yeah, moving on.
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's perfect, dude. It's like you're streamlining without a subconscious streamliner.
Okay. So based off of the work, uh, so the school district in twenty twenty three did a master plan of LCIS to examine the costs for renovations. Um, aquatic center replacement and abatement. So
Twenty twenty three numbers.
with the estimated, this is twenty twenty three numbers, this is the estimated construction cost, we always have to build in that escalation.
Yeah.
I always go for the high one, cause
It's more accurate, it's more likely, yeah.
Yes, um, yeah.
History tells us.
Yeah, so um, you're looking at fifteen point two millions for the aquatic center replacement and abatement in that area. You look on the bottom there, you're looking at two point six million dollars on that for a locker room remodel for uh the public use, so the locker rooms there are also built of asbestos and they are not ADA compliant.
Mm-hmm.
So fifteen plus two, so you're looking at seventeen million dollars for eighteen million dollars, yeah, it's all in, yeah, eighteen million dollars for a a pool design that based on the feasibility study, the community does not want.
Yeah.
Um, and you're also looking at a new build of eighteen and a half to twenty point two million dollars.
Yeah.
Um, part of that, you know, part of part of uh the prior boards and you know, part of the the rationale, our rationale at the time, right, it's like, you know, so it was a different school district administration. Were not the easiest to uh to work with. Um. But we didn't know like the future of of LCIS, what was going to happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then also digging more in with staff, so Amber, former rec director, Karen Fee, Michael, Jesus, like learning from them of like how bad the operational issues were, like of the pool and that, like, so the water, when it leaked in there.
Mm-hmm.
No one knows where it goes.
Mm-hmm.
Literally no.
Let's uh, promising for the foundations.
There's.
No.
Indeed, um, so it just, yeah, so there's just like, and I think too as well, just like there were so many unknowns with that building.
Yeah.
Um. And, yeah.
Who who is the most reliable source of this information for us?
It would be, it would be, um, I will send you, uh, guys, the um, master plan that the school district did. So when we did the master plan for this, so when I talk about master plan, that means you bring in architects, mechanical engineers, all the other kinds of engineers, HVAC specialists. Everybody, right, so you have this team of highly specialized people who go through your building, look at everything, and then uh estimate construction cost based, you know, based off of various factors that they have.
Right. Was there one guy who was kind of supervising or one, a a
Was it Harland?
A manager, a project manager for that, or, what what I what I wanna, what I'm getting at is for community engagement purposes and being able to communicate all of this and and help people understand where why we're in the position that we're in, you know, what would it take or what would it cost for us to get a walkthrough, half a day, full day, I don't care with that project manager and have them go over all the cans of worms that, you know, these sticking points, these like really red flags that are like, and have Finn from the Herald with us taking notes and like, you know, or in a communications director, have somebody, so we can really kind of I just don't think people don't understand, I didn't, and I I still I don't want to, but I, cause I hate being wrong, but like, the whole idea of like, we can just fix what we've got. But in the event, this is a really bad idea for our taxpayer dollars, how do I convince everyone else of that? You know, how do I show them what I've learned? They're not gonna sit in here with me over, you know, two weeks going over enough different presentations that formed changed my position on something, but you know.
They might not change their minds is also the trick. Just, I just.
Well, it's like, I gotta put the afternoon.
I want you to try, no, a hundred percent, I'm just saying expectation wise, cause this information
Yeah.
it like the school district has it, they share it with anybody who asks. I want you, I want you to do this, I wanna help, and I want the expectation to also be like
Realistic, yeah.
realistic, but they might not believe you.
That's okay, I gotta try, you know, the facts as I see them, you know, and I, it's hard to see all the facts, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
It's blunky, doesn't look the same from the outside as does from inside.
It really doesn't.
Um, let me reach out to, I think it was Harlem and Pope is the firm that did it, but I think they're based in Eagle, um. Happy to reach out, I will get you guys this full report, so you have that full report, um, of that, but yeah, we'll find a time.
Yeah. If it saves taxpayer money, we can FaceTime with them or something with the communications director and come up with a strategy.
Yeah.
You know, I don't wanna have to pay somebody a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars to come over here just to, I know Matt was interested in walking through there too, but and he knows this stuff way better than I do, and I think even he was starting to understand that, you know, in the best interest of saving taxpayer dollars plan, you know, this alternate plan, you know, you guys have done your homework, and I I respect that, and.
Yeah. Okay.
It's always cheaper to do new build.
Um.
I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just saying, I I've I've grown up in a in a in a rehabilitation family.
For definitely.
And every single time they were, a client was faced with new build or or renovation, it was always cheaper to do new build.
Yeah.
Cause that's the unknowns, but.
It's the unknowns, and it's also like, how long can you extend?
To, I again, I've built several facilities in my career. Trying to renovate something which is at end of life, cause that building is, that pool is fifty years is old beyond its intended life. Just a big money pit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You better build something fresh, clean, fit for purpose, fit for modern use, trying to renovate
If you should.
and you've got an existing end building in mind which is restricted, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Within historical, uh, I I can't get the correct term right now, but within historical building guidelines
Yes.
that doesn't qualify as a historical building either, as a building on a inch.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's not old enough.
Typically, eighty seven apply to historical guidelines, I'm just saying.
It's old enough that.
This building is exempt, and whenever one's know, I did my homework on that.
Correct.
So you guys can do whatever you want on this building.
That's a complicated. It's a complicated thing.
Also needs a bigger office.
Yes, I, uh, Jim.
I do, thank you, Andy.
Jim is here, uh, Jim is our architect, so he's uh been studying the day with Michael evaluating the building. Um, but you, and he, it is on his list of Commissioner Rowe has to be redone. Doors need to be removed and all your offices need to be the same size. We can start with that.
Sweet.
Not have to be too self-serving. Um, so where we need guidance from you guys tonight, we can try and get guidance from uh Matt tomorrow, um. So we need some uh guidance on Jim or no Jim. Jim adds about three to four million dollars, is quite a range, I understand, but you know, there's certain things we could do to make it three, certain things we could do to make it four. Also, if you look in the top uh picture, the previous board, so we we had discussed several sites of where this building could go.
Oh, look at that.
One of them is Harrison Ball Field, one of them is Community Field. Um, so if you have a strong preference on either, let us know, I think the recommendation would be to have it at Community Field where it already is, that kind of recreation, um, asset, it's closer to the schools, um. It's also our prop, well, so it's Harrison Ball Field, but it's our property, uh.
That is ours as well.
Um.
What kind of impact are we looking at next door there to you know, I know it's not a a massive chunk of the community, but the rodeo grounds are important to people, am I looking at that right there at the top?
Yeah, so that's.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the rodeo areas, um, the only other person who would be impacted would be former Commissioner Jack Saunders.
That's his house right up there.
And he has. Yeah, and he's, he wants to develop more there, so, but uh.
Wouldn't it also be a huge benefit to his development properties, like he'd be increasing the value to be that close to an asset?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then, so the county does own a portion of this down here, and then the rest is uh Newmont Mining, which is why I asked Nell for a new contact there, cause Newmont uh has this property, I know that they will still have corporate standards that they would need to remediate to, but Newmont is also in the process of uh bobshitting non-essential properties from their portfolio.
They're divesting.
Nice.
Oh, divesting.
Let's go.
We would be the perfect candidate to divest to a place they would be in.
Strike, well, the iron is awesome, there's a lot of junk in those woods.
Exactly, it's insane.
Yeah, yeah. Uh-huh.
There's a lot of, and I think it's more and more every year that I noodle around back there that
Very exciting, this is.
Right.
It's, we don't have any issues with proximity to cemetery-related trickiness.
No, cemetery is good, and the reason I know that is because of Jack Saunders, um, because he was trying uh to get, was it water?
The sanitation.
Sanitation. Sanitation to go underneath the graveyard, um, the Catholic diocese uh declined.
Yeah, that's not allowed.
Right.
That's not allowed.
This water tastes funny.
No, there's Tim.
Yeah.
Animal shelter might not be soon.
Right, yeah. Um, so really kind of where we're at is, Jim or no Jim, you can kind of imagine the footprint of this building without this orange
Yeah.
chunk on it.
Yeah.
Um.
Cool.
Um, I think too, uh, pro staff had also, you know, talked about a sauna, sauna was heavily used at the old uh aquatic center.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so they did, we did build in a spa, but if you, you know, really want that sauna, there's another additional cost.
Okay.
Um, so, we think about that, but probably like within the next week, we'll, we will need that decision on that as they, as a team, the OLC team is ready to get to conceptual plans.
This is so fun. And I love that it's right next to the turf field.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they would hopefully allow us to master plan that site to include all fields, whatever, you know.
Yeah.
Consolidation, become a hub, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I love it.
Um.
Why is nobody here? Oh.
Wow, they're over there. It's us and someone, right? Somebody's here.
It's.
Yeah, that's Karen.
What's, uh, sending Karen, yeah.
Karen.
Yeah.
Karen.
Karen.
Princess.
Oh.
Yeah, Princess, yeah.
The Grand Deputy.
Um.
I was, um, wondering if somebody's from Cooper Court, I don't really remember the name of.
Yeah, it is very funny when people like pop on all of a sudden in a meeting, you're like, oh.
I'll watch it later. Like, oh, somebody hasn't texted you.
Right.
Yes, it is.
So fun.
It's like I was explaining to you, you know, like, I'm gonna say the same things, but you know how I say it might be addressed to the people, you know, depending on who's there.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so that is feasibility study. Um. Big outline questions, Jim or no Jim, and if you were okay with Community Field versus Harrison Field. Uh, bit more of a minor question is the sauna. Um, so you guys can take some time to think about that, we will, um we can send you all of the materials from the feasibility study so far. So in your copious free time, you can look through those.
Found a couple gaps next week.
Okay. And then just time check, do we want to dive into LCIS?
Mm-hmm.
No?
Sorry, I don't, but I have had lots of conversations, I feel okay with
Okay.
Andy, if you wanna keep talking about LCIS.
Um, you know, I I just, I I'd like to learn more so that I can answer questions from the community from a place of confidence and knowledge. Um, but at a different time, I could do that one-on-one with or through email packets or anything, you know, I don't.
Well, we could do it, well, Matt would probably wanna hear it too, so why don't we just move it to next week?
Yeah.
So if you're not gonna like do it in a way that would be recorded, then let's just do it to, let's move it to a different time.
Good.
And put it as like a, uh, on the schedule and have it recorded and everything, okay, so everyone can hear what we hear and.
And that way. I don't want that. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Does that sound good? Okay, yeah, we're doing that.
All right. Mm-hmm, are we?
You okay?
Yeah, fine, I got a a caffeine withdrawal headache, though.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Crush it, that it's fine, I'm just gonna find some. Crush it, that, it's fine, I'm just gonna find some, I don't know, I'll go somewhere and go to work.
Yeah. There's a first aid thing.
Yeah, yes, in the break room, there's the first aid kit, it has.
There's a break room.
It's got a table.
It's got a table?
Bosch, Bosch and then on the back there.
Wow. Yeah.
Wow. Um, is that where you get the water?
No, I say it's just our office.
Oh, okay. He's got all the goodies in there, we need electric kettle and a little mini fridge in the break room and. Or my office, I don't know, I guess we can fill my office up with stuff since I got that extra space.
I am perfectly fine with my space.
I am guilty with my office, I, once I poked my head into the other ones, I was like, oh wait, yeah, pizza's over, I got this guilt.
You have another deal, nice spot, live it up.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, tomorrow we're back at nine, we'll start with Claire for your overview of office and emergency management.
Turns really bright, so it's like. Love it.
Then Randy will join us for a little bit from DOLA. Then we'll have the one community project overview. Then in the afternoon will be, uh, DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, um, with community planning and development, kinda going over that full. Land use process, quasi judicial process, um.
Three one.
As well, yeah, um. But we should ramp up, oh no, uh, EDC is gonna come at three. We'll be on by three thirty, it's one.
Do we, are they the only nonprofit that answered the call?
Um, no, I think, um, so I, cause Carly reached out and then, you know, Christie with the storytelling, um.
And Christie, you know, there's her?
Yeah, and then I think it was the, um.
Okay.
I think Lauren did like a big initial push and people were like, okay, whatever, and now they realize like, oh, it's a new board, it's, yes, so we're working on schedule in those books too.
Okay. Okay, awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
I was like, why is the EDC the only nonprofit we're gonna hear from? But that's great, we'll have it later.
I've, 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 I've reached out to me directly and I asked them lately to just set up something for all three of us.
Yes.
By the.
Oh, oh, right, I should have known, like, she's got it, it's just new.
Yeah.
Okay, friends, I hope I see you tonight.
Alright, well, it is three fifty-one P M. And you're thirty, you are fine, we are new at this and we're still, uh, taking our training wheels off, not even yet, so, uh, yeah. Three fifty-one P M, we are going to end this, uh, work session, Lake County Board of County Commissioners, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, chair.
Thank you, Elsa, Commissioner Elsa.
Hope to see you all tonight.